Okay, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of March 27, 2023. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht absent, Gould absent, Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. And the sun is shining, so that's an omen for the spring coming, I think, hopefully. First, we have public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. First is a presentation of the Good Neighbor Award. Rachel, do you want to come on up? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. So tonight, we are honoring Carol Lamb. She was nominated by not one, not two, but three of her neighbors, including Lisa Z., Erica G., and Heather S. They all called her the best neighbor, and based on their nomination forms, I have to agree. Some of the things that Carol is known for are watering neighbors' flowers and picking up their mail, her knowledge of community happenings, her general care and compassion, always being there to lend a hand or just to catch up. She hosts an amazing Halloween potluck, which I think we all should be invited to next year.
Yeah.
She consistently helps with any and all neighborhood projects. She helps out with her neighbors' children, or even helps drive them to and from doctor's appointments. She helped plan her 50th high school reunion, and so much more. Her neighbors all called her the definition of a good neighbor, and we are proud to give her this official title. Thank you for all that you do, Carol.
Aww. Okay, thank you.
And then your gift card.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol.
Appreciate this. This is a nice... It was a surprise, but thank you.
Carol, would you like to say anything?
It's hard to be... You know, you can be a good neighbor when you have good neighbors, too.
Right. So true.
Well, thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
And, Your Honor, she's also a longtime...
And a longtime election worker.
Oh, wow. That's great.
Yeah, wonderful.
Next, we have a library presentation from librarian Julianne Morian and council liaison Alice Mu. So Julianne, welcome back. Very nice to see you.
Thank you. We are going to start...
Whoa.
We'll queue it up this way. We appreciate you inviting us back. I think last time we were here was either late January or early February. I think I've introduced myself to everyone. I'm Julianne Morian, the library director. And with me tonight, Alice Mu, our city liaison to the library. I will point out, last time we were here, we were wearing masks. So it's really wonderful that we get to see you all without any masks, even though they were necessary at the time. We're really happy that we can see our smiling faces. So for tonight, we have a brief presentation, three to five minutes. I'd love to be able to just keep a captive audience and show your annual report for 2022. Thank you.
Very good, yeah.
We appreciate your attention for that two-minute video. If any of you want to check it out, it's on our YouTube page at any time. You do have in front of you two things, just for your reference and edification. We do our annual report in a very succinct sort of one sheet, where we focus on our statistics and then all of our generous donors. We like to actually use our video as our major form of sort of communicating what we've done. We find that that's a little bit easier to digest than a traditional report. So I'm going to pass it over to Alice, and she's going to hit some of the highlights of statistics that we're particularly proud of.
So if you look on your sheet, you can see that the number of annual visitors... It averages out to about 1,000 people coming to visit the library per day, which is amazing to have 1,000 people coming through those doors. And then our overall circulation increased at least 3% over the past year, and the circulation of electronic items has increased up 25% from the year before, which is amazing. And so the library is really meeting the needs and the wants of the patrons by increasing their circulation of their electronic resources in audiobooks and eBooks, and that has been incredibly popular, too. And then our study rooms and meeting room bookings are very popular with over 8,000 reservations in the past year, which is coming back to what it was pre-pandemic as well. So it's good to see everybody utilizing those, especially the study rooms with all the students coming through.
Thank you, Alice. And Alice did a good job helping us kind of tie up the retrospective for 2022. I'm just going to touch on some things that we have looking forward to on the horizon for 2023. So Alice talked about, you know, study rooms. One of the things I'm particularly excited about is we're adding a 10th study room. Hopefully, this is one of those touchpoints or ways that you intersect with the library. We're finding that, you know, when the library was built, we called them "study rooms," but they're not just used by students anymore. This is a very popular resource for those who are entrepreneurs, self-employed, or perhaps just work from home. It's a phenomenon that's hit all of us, and so we find that those private spaces where you can reserve four hours at a time is incredibly in demand. So we'll be adding a 10th room. Additionally, we're going to be adding smart locks on all of our room spaces, our meeting rooms and our study rooms, which creates one less point of mediation where you have to wait in line to then get access to something. So again, it's that frictionless experience that we're chasing, hoping to make the library just a very easy experience for however you want to use us. New programs that we're launching this year. One that I want to highlight is our Memory Cafe. This was actually an idea that was born out of age-friendly and the dementia-friendly city initiative, which I think was born out of a council initiative here. And so we took that, we were invited to the age-friendly meetings, and so one of the ways that we're going to be fulfilling our goal and our pledge to that group is by offering Memory Cafes, which are programs designed for someone in the early stages of dementia with their care partner to have some sort of training and skill-building and social hour where you are stimulating your brain in a unique way, largely through sensory stimuli, but hoping to tap into some of those long-term memory aspects that are still active in the brain. We are exploring new outreach initiatives. One thing that I can talk about that we are exploring is actually meeting with city manager Nick Banda and the two chiefs to talk about what are the opportunities for the library to serve as maybe not quite an official warming station or cooling station in the summer, but a place of respite perhaps after hours. We're in those... You know, we're starting those talks to figure out what would it actually take, because we know the library is a very trusted institution in the community, and as somebody who lost power themselves, it's really nice to know you have a place where you can go to recharge, find heat, and get Wi-Fi if you need it. As always, we are defending the freedom to read. This is one of those stalwart principles on which we are based here at the library. We believe it's your right to make decisions about what you and children in your care may read, watch, and listen to, and we are going to continue to fight to defend your right to access those materials in the library. And on a fun note, we're preparing for our centennial in 2024. So that means so much of 2023 is going to be spent in the planning stages, because we hope to have a really fun year-long celebration, celebrating the fact that this library's been around since 1924 in this community.
Wow.
Something we're really proud of. So with that, we are happy to take questions or just let you advance on with your meeting tonight.
Counsel member Trent?
I don't really have any questions. I'm just excited to see that the numbers are back up. I've loved the public library since I was a child and hope others do as well, so it looks like they do. And we appreciate everything you do, and we especially like your native plant garden on the West Side.
Thank you. We love that, too.
Counsel member Peterson?
I just have a question regarding the youth program attendance. Has that grown through the years?
It has. I think that's one of those ones that ebbs and flows. We know that service to our youth and our families is probably one of our strongest pillars of what we do, so we are always trying to find ways to solicit more. Over the last year, we've hired in a couple of new librarians who are experienced librarians, and I'm really thrilled that they're bringing some experience from their home library here and reimagining some of our programs. We just celebrated Battle of the Books for our fifth graders, and it was a wonderful celebration of reading and just the joy on these kids' faces and the fact that they were exposed to books that might be beyond their bubble of what they traditionally read, to me, is especially exciting and invigorating, so.
Awesome. That's great, and it's great for the amount of people that are actually going to the library and utilizing it. That's awesome.
Counsel member Trent?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that the meeting rooms or the study rooms, they're free or they're minimal cost?
No. We do not charge for anything at our library. We believe that you have already paid for library services through your tax dollars. So we pledge to keep everything as free as possible. The only thing you'd have to pay for is your paper for printing or any sort of consumable in our maker space.
Yeah, there is a lot that the library offers for free, and I think people should go to the website and see what that is, because it really is a great resource, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. And Alice, thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Brian, is there any? Doesn't look like it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no callers.
All right, thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of March 13, 2023. Motion by council member Sage. Support by council member Peterson. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
I think I asked, was there any other public comment? Next, approval of the consent agenda. First is consideration of special event application from RN Staff Council Local 40, OPEIU, to hold a staff picnic in the municipal park on Saturday, April 29, 2023. Hopefully, the weather will be a little better. Next, the consideration of special event application of Dinosaur Hill to hold the Greater Rochester Heritage Day event on May 27, 28 in the municipal park, and then a review of the current special event calendar.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Motion by council member Peterson, support by council member Trent. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Great question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Council member Sage. So now that we've approved it, can we get Heritage Days on the calendar, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good. So first, we're going to a public hearing. Is a public hearing to consider reprogramming CDBG funds in accordance with the Community Development Block grant requirements? Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, tonight, we have scheduled the public hearing to reprogram our funds from years 19, 20, and 21. That totals $86,053. And the reason we're doing that is, in the Wayback Machine, back in 19, we had committed funds to help the OPC redo a vestibule. That was a help, but Cedar Brook, when they made a donation and actually did that, worked for OPC, so the dollars were set there, and no need to be spent there. And then the next two years, we had a plan to add a vestibule to the front of City Hall after deliberation with staff not needed, so we did not need those funds for years 20 and 21. So with the advent of the building of the All Abilities Park in the park, in our municipal park, this summer, we have a lot of ADA-compliant sidewalks that we have to rip out, the old paths, make them 10 feet wide, meet grade, get a landing from the community house parking lot up at the top down to ADA compliance to the new play area. So we are going to reprogram all three of these years based on the county's request, again, for $86,053. That will cover our match for the one grant. One grant, remember, we didn't have any match, but one we had, and so it will cover the bulk of the sidewalks that need to be done. So tonight, Mayor, if you would open a public hearing, and we would ask for a resolution to reprogram, again, fiscal years for '29, '20, and '21 for our CDBG program.
Any questions for the city manager? Council member Peterson?
Yes. So I remember when we had already put some of this funding towards the sidewalks, so now it's being sent from the other sidewalks to the sidewalks in the All Abilities area.
Yeah, if I may, through the chair. What we did was 20... What you're remembering is 22. We already knew that we weren't going to do the vestibule, so 22, and then these are... It's the same dollars. So we'll add 22s to this $86,000, and we're even closer to not having to pay anything for our sidewalks. Thank you.
Okay. We will open the public hearing at 7:17. Is there any public comment? We'll close the public hearing at 7:17. Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes, thank you. So staff, I think this is good work in reprogramming these towards a project that is going to bring great enjoyment to our community and our parks, so they can make a motion to reprogram the 2019, 2020, and 2021 CDBG monies.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by council member Peterson. Is there discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is the legislative deliberation. First is a consideration of report regarding zoning ordinance, Article 23, Performance Standards, Section 2306, light and illumination. Mr. City Manager, do you want to just give a...
I will.
Thank you for the review.
Counsel, for years now, I think, three years maybe, we've been wrestling with potential change to our existing light ordinance. It's been to the Planning Commission years ago. They decided not to take action, came back to the city council. City council said, let's take a look at it in a different light, no pun intended, and see if we can come up with something that could solve some of the issues that have been coming up from the public. So we went back to the Planning Commission, had a series of meetings, study meetings. A lot of good information was provided by the public. People did their research. Planning Commission chose to just simply pass on their... Pass on this item for the city council to make a decision on. So tonight, what we're asking for is to set the public hearing for the last meeting of April, because we have to advertise it in the paper, et cetera, to make that happen. So you've been given a lot of information, that we've gotten emails from different folks, and both sides of the story to digest. We'll have a great dialogue. We can answer any questions. The fire chief normally would be here. He could not make it tonight, and he's the expert on this. He's the one that has to enforce the existing ordinance and anything proposed we do, but he'll certainly be here at the public hearing. Attorney Krotz, been great helping us right through this all, and... Attorney, if you'd like to say anything else?
Sure. So before you is a version of the light ordinance. When the city council sent it back to Planning Commission back in September, we took what we had previously worked on and tweaked it. There was some language provided by a resident that we incorporated into it. Planning Commission did discuss it, as city manager Banda indicated, and so the... In the past, Planning Commission did not move something forward. In this case, we explained that the, according to the ordinance, the Planning Commission's job at that point is not necessarily to approve or not approve an ordinance language, because that is ultimately the city council's job, but... So they consider it, and in... They provided a number of comments. Instead of trying to tweak a word here or there, knowing that city council was going to be addressing it and wanting to handle it, that they provided their comments in the packet are a couple of their minutes. I did summarize some of the points that planning commissioners made. They asked if we could do that, and we did that. So as city manager Banda said, if city council wishes to move forward with discussing this at a public hearing, then that would be the next step, or if there's a different direction city council wishes me and administration to go down, then we would do it as well.
Very good. Counsel? Counsel member Peterson?
So for our administration, so number on page two of the ordinance or page 35 of the packet, it states that in 4B, the enforcement will be resident complaint initiated and not city code enforcement initiated. However, in the next one, it would be a violation of the ordinance as well. Is there a reason why we can't... Can we just, like, take out B and move it to public hearing? I don't know. Based on, you know, the communications recently received as well from residents, I think that leaving this to complaint-driven is not, like, a very friendly thing to do, because we don't... You don't want to have that kind of contention amongst neighbors. And then the other question I have is, why is motion lights not listed in A? Because motion lights would actually get rid of many of the complaints anyhow, because they would just go on and off for safety purposes. And I think that's where... I want us all to be safe here. I don't want anyone to be annoyed, and I do not want to see that neighbors don't speak to neighbors anymore. I think that sets a very bad example of having it complaint-driven, so I don't know where it can go from here.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, to answer council member Peterson's comments. So the complaint-driven by the resident was something that city council had required or gave direction to. One of the complaints... Not complaints. One of the issues raised by the fire chief is that such an ordinance may create a number... A great number of enforcement if it was just city... The fire department wasn't going to go around and check out every light, because that would take, you know, that would be a nightmare to try to do. So it was actually city council that directed it to be a complaint-driven by residents rather than a self-initiated process. As far as in A with not having motion lights, probably a couple of years ago, we did have that as a discussion item as well, and so it was decided that, at least during those discussions, that it wasn't necessary, because those would already be regulated by spotlights and floodlights, because a motion security light would be... Would fall under one of those two already. We did have language back in the day about, you know, how, you know, it couldn't be triggered from off-premise activity, so if someone was walking down the sidewalk, it wouldn't be tripped. And so that was actually taken out as, if my memory serves me, as being unnecessary, because the discussion items would already contain those lights. So not that we can't put that in there. If city council directs to have some language with motion sensor lights, we can do that. But I think if you would still probably have... Want to have these, based on how we feel the discussion has gone, a spotlight is, you know, motion lights are generally up higher, and so those would already have to have the shielding under the current language.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, so... And I'll disagree, only because having a motion light, they're not on all the time, and they do not project as much light, because they're facing differently than just spotlights do usually. And I think to be more friendly, that would... Having motion lights, because if you don't specify that, not all of them come. There's many spotlights and lights that do not come with the motion sensor. So I think that it would be great to have that as an option. And then if no one's going to take out number 4B, then instead of having it as a very negative statement here, I would change it to resident initiated instead of a complaint, because that does make more sense instead of calling it a complaint. But I still feel that B should be totally stricken from this, because I do not feel that that's setting a good statement for our community for what we're trying to accomplish, because we really want everyone to be safe, not at the detriment of, you know, the results of bad behavior.
Counsel member Trent?
Yes. I don't know how specific that you get with these, because, I mean, you've got... I get it that its exterior lights not exceed 100 watts, but you've got warm lighting and, you know, the cooler lighting of the LEDs, and that I... You know, if council member Peterson is speaking about motion lights and detectors, then yellow lighting doesn't attract bugs, and I don't know how you would get that information, and I don't know how detailed you would get, but that is in a lot of the research that human can see... Human beings can see the entire visible light spectrum, but moths and other insects cannot. So if you want to cut down on those, the yellow lighting isn't as obtrusive, and it's just as safe, and safer for insects, because I like to talk about them. Just wanted to say that.
Counsel member Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have talked about this for three years. I don't remember why we put in the additional metric for 100 watts. We already have a metric in there in...
One candle.
3A, one-foot candle, right? So it applies to both commercial and residential. Let's make... Let's keep that consistent. I would make a suggestion to remove 4A. I like council member Peterson's suggestion to remove the word complaint. It is simply a resident-initiated action. Okay, I'm good with that. And other than that, I guess I would make a motion with those two amendments to move forward to a public hearing.
So motion by... Okay, motion by council member Sage, and what are the two changes again?
To remove 4A, and under 4B, to remove the word complaint.
Mr. Mayor, may I...
Mr. City Attorney?
Council member Sage, did you mean the entire 4A or just the metric of 100 watts?
Just the metric, sorry. Yes. Just wanted to make sure.
Use your support.
No.
I may. In fact, we could clarify the amendments to the motions again.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
So what were the changes, council member Sage?
Under 4A, exterior lights that exceed 100 watts or LED equivalent of 100 watts, remove that portion. So how would that read, City Attorney? Exterior lights, spotlights, and floodlights on single-family properties must be directed away from and shielded from other residential lots, such that no direct light falls onto the other residential lot. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, if that's the change, then it would be applicable to every light in the city, in residential. So if... So, if that's the intent, then, then so be it. But, that's what that would do because it would say, you would actually not even need spotlights or floodlights because you would just, you'd just say exterior lights must be directed, you know, on single-family properties must be directed away. So, that would apply to every residential light in the city.
So, it already applies to every commercial light in the city, correct? On the commercial side?
Is it?
Mr. City Attorney?
So, the provision that Councilmember Sage is referring to is in 3A, which says, and this applies to the CBD, B1, O1, actually, essentially, anything not residential. It says exterior lighting shall be arranged as far as practical to reflect light away from any residential use and in no case show one, more than one-foot candle power of light cross at a lot line five feet above the ground in a residential district. And then, there's B, if you'd like me to continue, that says residential lighting from a commercial building or multiple-family dwelling in any district that abuts and faces a single-family dwelling in a residential district shall have shielding that directs light downward such that, such that light does not shine on the windowed sides of a single-family dwelling and any light fixture existing at the time that's of the enactment that would fall into a non-conforming light that has some sunset provision in it. So, those are, that's the provision that Councilmember Sage is referring to that applies in the non-residential zones.
And that would then go to the residential zones?
That, that's, that's his proposal was.
Is that your intent?
Correct.
Okay. And then, the second thing is he, on 4B, wants to take out?
Complaint.
Complaint. And this would be resident-initiated, just to take out the one.
Okay, all right. I can, I can second that, that motion.
Second, support by Mayor Protem Salvi, a discussion, Councilmember Peterson. Mayor Protem Salvi, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. I did really want to clarify, though, in 5E, it discusses other temporary lighting deemed to be reasonable and appropriate by the city of Rochester. These are under exemptions. So, are we really there talking about holiday lighting, Christmas lights? We had a resident write in about the Edison lights, you know, they're really popular to have on your patio, your back. Are we, is that, is that our intent? Is that what we mean by those comments?
So, that, that's existing language. And so, I would say other temporary lighting would probably refer to the twinkle lights, Christmas lights type, or other holiday lighting that is for a period of time not permanently illuminated.
Okay, so, to be clear, like the Edison lights, patio lights, with the revision that we just talked about for section 4A.
You'd have to shield it.
You'd have to shield it.
So, your little Edison lights hanging on a thing are going to have to have a little shield over them?
I would say, I would say so.
They don't sell them that way. I don't think they come that way.
I don't think they come that way.
They don't.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't support, support this with that stringent because virtually every house in the city is going to be in non-compliance.
I would amend my motion to remove 5E.
And then, you can leave your Christmas lights up all year.
Well, you can do that anyway, can't you?
No, there's technically, so it says you have six weeks.
Councilmember Peterson?
So, all right, well, I'm not in support of the changes that way because we've taken out, not Mayor Protem's change. I understand that. I think we have some properties that have Edison lights on their fence all night long, and it's just, it's not very good either. But, I do think that motion lights needs to be in A because there is no definition stated here regarding spotlights and floodlights. And I personally do not want, be in there at all because I do not want it to be resident-initiated only to have something done. I think that based on the two, the letters that we've received and the past things that have taken place, I think that it really does hurt the neighbors and the friendliness that we expect of being a good neighbor for what we tout as a good neighbor. I think that it just pushes it to the next limit, and I don't think anyone, in the last letter we received, you know, you're talking about people who, you know, aren't anticipating having neighborly angst, and I just think it's, makes it hard, so.
Just for clarification, Mayor Protem, did you, do you support the taking the E out for supporting the?
I don't, I don't understand how they'd fix it because if you take out E, then it says Christmas lights have to be shielded.
Correct.
Right.
We are a city of Christmas lights. Our entire downtown is one big light.
Take them all out. No more lights.
So, so then we have, so where's the, Madam Clerk, where is the motion right now?
So, the motion on the floor, made by Sage, supported by Salvi at this time, so we don't withdraw it, is to remove 4A or change the language from the 100 and amend 4B to remove complaint. And it's also to set the public hearing for this, so this isn't.
Okay, but not 5E is not taken out?
Correct.
Councilmember Trent.
Okay, so, is there an exemption for lights that are hanging out on people's, behind their, on their porches and the, you know, over their decks? Is there, as you're saying, there's not an exemption that can't be in for shielding miniature lights? I mean, aren't we talking about larger lights that are in garages and front porches and things? I mean, can't you get more detailed as to what you have to shield?
Mr. City Manager?
Herein lies the problem. So, what we really should be doing on this is defining the problem. The problem didn't, I believe, from all the three years of discussion, no one wanted to, I hope, no one wanted to cover every single light in the city. It's not enforceable. These are circumstances where somebody has a light that shines in somebody's house, period. So, if you read this as it is, the only check we have right now is 100, one-foot candle at the property line. Problem is, in the case that started all this, it does not, there is no violation. So, this ordinance is looking for a violation that doesn't exist presently. So, if this ordinance was passed, the shielding would go up. True, but the light, the light's not in violation of our ordinance. So, the only way to get to stopping the light source is put shields on it. So, you can see the Planning Commission struggle with this. Which lights do you say? The igloo lights? Is it the Edison lights? Does every light have to have a shield on it? We can't enforce that. So, it'd be nicer to tie it down to certain circumstances so that we could define it. In the instance of commercial, those are spotlights up high right into somebody's home. And we didn't even get any pushback from the commercial people. It's like, no, you're right. They're trying to light their carports from 100 feet away. Put the lights under the carport, aim them back at your building. So, in our town, residential, every single house in this town will be violating if you need to put a shield up on a light. Every, literally, anybody that has a side light, they won't be over a foot candle, but they will be able to be seen. So, the Planning Commission struggled with how do you, lights, most lights aren't made for shields. You'd have to put aluminum foil to block them. So, you can see how tough this is in a city like here. We understand dark sky, we understand certain circumstances, but in Rochester, Michigan, virtually impossible to not light up your neighbor by putting a 20-watt light bulb. My, I'll give you my example. My side yard is eight feet away from my neighbor's house because she's built in the property line, basically, three inches off. I couldn't have any light in my side yard to actually light up my doorway. I think Councilman Peterson was trying, Councilwoman Peterson was trying to get to, I get that we want to make it safe, but then kick them off, kick all the lights off. And that's, that would certainly solve it, but not all fixtures, you can put a motion detector on, detector on. So, again, that's a destroy the Planning Commission's hat. How do you have one size fits all in this case? That was because it was how we got to resident-driven complaint. If someone has a problem with their neighbor, you can't, you can't say we don't want to have bad neighbors. It's because one neighbor doesn't like what the other neighbor's doing. The only way to enforce that is something that we can enforce in writing. So, right now, we have it, one-foot candle. We had no violations in the city, resident to resident, of over one foot. So, the only time this would matter is if you said shield it, and then we could go out and see, the light's not shielded, then you have to tell them they have 30 days to fix it. So, I hope that helps.
I think so.
Trent, Councilperson Peterson, go ahead.
Oh, for administration, then. So, you're not going to like this, but, you know, if we wouldn't have put our setbacks and spread them out to put more house on a lot, you would not have had lights, right, going into windows. And I think that is something that we should actually look at too because that is something in the future, having that much space taken up, right? And you have, you have to by code put lights out there, right? So, there's, you have to look at it from all different angles, but I do think lot size and those setbacks needs to be, need to be looked at, especially on the sides like that when there's going to be lights. And I also believe, based on the one letter that we received, it should, the garage lights, there's no reason why a garage light needs to be on all night. If you're worried about safety, a spot, the motion lights work very well because I do have three, just so I can feel safe too because I have backup. You don't know, everyone's property is different and everybody's sense of security is different. I think that we need to really be mindful of that. I think, I think the motion lights actually do wonders to take care of those things, and then people do not have to have them on all night because both, both letters reference garage lights, and those could have just been motion lights.
Councilmember Trent.
Well, I do agree, I disagree with Councilmember Peterson, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But, I understand why you have the resident complaint initiated, and I agree with taking out the word complaint, but it doesn't seem like they have much recourse to, to, unless they have something in this, this new policy to say, yeah. And how many neighbors would do that? I don't know. I would say, it would be interesting to see. I don't think it's opening up too big a can of worms. And I also think that there should be some guidance of these larger homes being built. If the home is, you know, really large next to a smaller home, those lights are going to be, if they're not shielded, they're going to aim right at the house that is the smaller home. So, to me, there would be guidance to that, and I think more than anything, that would be guidance so that if someone references this, they won't spend thousands of dollars on an ordinance amount of lights. That was in one of the letters.
Ms. Ms. Peterson?
Yeah, so, and basically, that's what I was saying as well, but, you know, back when David Burchler was our planner, city planner, and Crichton was building the parking structure, and we did all types of lighting because we had nothing in our ordinance back then to even protect residents from commercial building. There are ways to do this. If they can, if commercial can do it, we should be able to have some mechanism to where residents should not have to file a complaint about having something done that we're just all in compliance, you know, by having a motion light. Motion lights will save all this discussion of three years.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Councilmember Peterson, would you add under 4A, exterior lights, scratching all the words through to 100 watts, spotlights, motion-activated lights, and floodlights? Would you just simply ask to add those words?
Well, I asked for the motion lights the very first time around because they're not part of it.
I think what Councilmember, if I may, I think what she's indicating is to require the exterior lights to be?
Motion.
Motion lights, not to also include motion lights.
So, that's an encumbrance on every person in town?
Well, no, not to, no, you don't have to do that, but that should be an option here that people understand. I mean, to me, when you take what we already had commercially, it works, right? Everything is just shielded. You can't, you have to protect the neighborhood of the residents. That's how that one's written. This one is not protecting everybody because you're still allowed to do it and nothing is shielded, right? I mean, this would be the only thing to shield lights is in this one, vaguely. But, we're still back to...
It would be all spotlights, it would be all floodlights and, the way it's written now, and exterior lights that exceed 100 watts. That, so, the shielding would be automatically required for spotlights and floodlights right now under this proposed language.
But, you can get motion lights and any other type of light. They're not all spotlights and they're not all floodlights.
So, you would be requiring, getting new fixtures for, say, like a carriage light on the side of the?
No, this just says they must be directed away.
Right.
So, if you have a light that's not shielded and it's not directed away, then you're not in compliance, but, you know, it's nothing here states that, you know, applicable ordinance, what is it, right? What, what's, what's the penalty for this? You have to shield your light, right? If it's a motion light, you don't have to do anything with it. And then, down here on that temporary lighting too, I mean, I think that, can I just?
Suggest...
No, go ahead.
Suggestion, I mean, there are a lot of, I mean, we're trying to create this at this meeting. Is there enough information for the City Attorney to try this again? Or is nothing, nothing changed?
Well, I mean, I could certainly make the changes that Councilmember Sage motioned, and I can try to figure out how to include, maybe, is it an exception?
Right.
That, that for a motion light? So, it wouldn't have to be shielded if it was on a motion sensor?
Right.
So, I could include a, an exception to the requirement to be shielded if it's on a motion sensor. Is that, if that's?
And then, and then what about?
I think that's what she's thinking.
And then, what about the 5E that Mayor Protem brought up about, you know, lights in your backyard?
We could define them. If we, if we want to exempt those, we can define them.
Maybe come up with?
You can't shield them.
Right, you can't.
Right, so, maybe come up with a list. Again, I'm just, I'm just suggesting.
Just trying to figure it out.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Again, we're, we're not going to take sides, we're not going to get defensive, but our job in this case, because we have to enforce, one of the fire chiefs here, we're going to have an answer to all your questions, and trust me, for three years, the Planning Commission's gone over every single, every single nuance of this. For instance, I stand in my, I'm in my house, I open the door, go like this with my hand, five houses down, a motion detector light turns on. I have no idea how it's that powerful. So, you'd have to define motion detectors, how far out does the motion have to be? In this case, where there's a garage, they only have 20 feet from the garage door and those lights to the sidewalk. People want to have lights kick on when they walk by, but if it's five blocks, five houses down, you don't want them. Every time the wind blows a branch, if it sets off a light, it's going to be on all night. So, we've talked about that. It's so hard to write this to fit all, right? So, we're going to make sure that we get it right. If you want to have some version of this, we're going to make sure, I promise the fire chief, I'll tell you, that's that. We're going to let you know that every single action and word in here, we have to enforce, and we want to make sure that we can. It's the Steve Zook rule. If you can't enforce it, don't write it, right? So, it might not make it easy, and now, we're not saying that it can't be done, but I want you to know, we're going to make sure, we let you know that we've thought of all these things and, and the trips that come with them, you know, with, again, do we all, want all the lights in the backyard off? Does that mean your little teeny carriage lights that you stuck in the ground on a solar have to be shielded for, from the front? Those are, I hope not because this town, we, we look good at night.
So, so why don't we have the City Manager make one attempt?
Okay.
One more attempt, but I think eventually, you know, this meeting, next meeting, we need to vote on this.
Yes.
Correct.
We need to have a public hearing and make a decision, whatever that decision is.
Correct.
I mean, this, I think this is dragged on. You know, as you say, the Planning Commission has gone over and over and over this. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just really wanted to add as well, a couple of other comments, you know. One is, you know, we've talked about how is this initiated? Clearly, we have to have something that we can enforce, absolutely. But, I, I do think it's important in reading through the comments from the Planning Commission is, it can't just be any resident, you know. I don't want someone to be able to drive by and just not like my lights, and so therefore they, they initiate.
That's what we were worried about.
You have to have an impact, you have to be impacted by it to be able to initiate. And I do like getting rid of the word complaint, that's just being a good neighbor. And we just have to define this. We have to have something where we can give a tool for the city to use to help the neighbors work this out.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and that's, thank you for bringing that up because that's the, one of the things that the Planning Commission, we thought if a resident gets mad at another resident, how it works is, I'm going to drive around the... mad at another resident, how it works is, I'm going to drive around the entire city and give you addresses. People do that, and right now, Fire Chief, if our park, the reason we striked all our parking lots was it was hard for him to write a citation or a letter of, stripe your parking lot, when ours weren't striped. So we have to make sure that we don't have disgruntled residents saying, now I'm going to go get everybody in the whole city, and we have to enforce that. So that's why there's a great, great commissioner, a great comment from the planning commissioner saying, make sure it's the affected party that makes the complaint, or makes the request, initiates, initiates the request, not somebody five blocks away.
And then, Councilmember Sage and I, we were talking about this, the planning commission, and we talk, we always talk about good neighbors, and we all believe in that, and we all want everybody to be a good neighbor.
Not so much.
But it's great until they're not good neighbors. And that's why we have to have this, you know, that's why we have laws and ordinances and stuff.
We do.
And that's why we have one letter in our packet tonight, where the good neighbor theory didn't work.
So is, do we want to table the motion till the next meeting? There is a motion on the table.
It would be to just set the public hearing probably for the second meeting in April.
Correct.
That's what the
The main part of that motion is to set the public hearing for April 24th, when this would come back. So that would be amend the motion then, right?
Well, or have the motion to have a public hearing in, in this
And we'll work on language.
Okay, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Oh, real quick.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, so for administration though, so is there any way that in the future of building, okay, in reference to the letter that was in the packet today, right? Once the new houses started being built, next to these other houses, and they put in all that lighting, is there a mechanism that can be in place that when it comes to the building code, and when they're building, that at least they know they have, if they're facing directly into windows, they should put a motion light there?
You're talking about single family residents?
Correct, yes, yes.
So based on what your, your discussed changes tonight is, they would have to comply with complete shielding of all their exterior lights? So does that, that is, that would be in the ordinance if that passes? So that, that would be your, because a, a single family home doesn't come for site plan approval.
Right.
Right, that, that's just commercial. So, but if there's a, a light regulation that you're proposing to put in, that says the, you know, spotlights, floodlights, whatever, has to be shielded, then new construction would have to comply with that.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure, so new construction would have to. But in the meantime, I mean, I know until this comes back, how, how can we help the people who are being affected by this though? And I don't care if it's one or 10, I mean
There's no violation, that's the problem with the existing ordinance, so we can't help them. There is no violation, they've been light metered, they're under a foot candle, until you write an ordinance that makes the conditions that are being spoke about a violation, there is no violation, so we can't help them. There's, of all the, all the circumstances, I live on the West Side, you know that, there's one or two, we know one, I think there's two that have side yards, putting, a front yard. We just don't handle situations, so always side to side, and that's the worry, is everybody's side door now will either have to have a motion detector on it or a shield, everybody. So we have just a few circumstances, and that's when, where the mayor alluded to, you would hope a good neighbor would say, I know I'm in a different situation, where my side yards against your front yard and your front windows, but unfortunately, I haven't been able to work that out.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Next, a request from the DDA Board for continuation of the outdoor dining platform program. As you saw in your memo, the DDA Board unanimously voted to recommend continuation of the outdoor dining program. Now, it says here the DDA also voted unanimously to request that the city council once again waive any parking fees. That's not my understanding of what the vote was. The vote was to send it over for the city council to consider, because I would not have voted for that. So that's what we're discussing tonight.
What is the cost?
Yeah, so, if I may, Mr. Mayor, so, agreed, so the, the, it was twofold ask, it was last year, the city council waived the, the fee for the parking space. I think it, with the dollar and a quarter now, I think chiefly came out to $22,600, if I remember right. If those spaces, so it would be for Boss Barbara De Marcos, the meeting house, Rochester Brunch House, Tulare Row, Tanya's Victorian Rose, and then Spice and Tea and the side dish are going to take one that was app beyond juice, then the DDA has their own one in front of the Mason's Place. So, so we figured out average use of each parking space based on our spreadsheet, and it came out to, we'd be waiving $22,000 plus or minus. I, I will tell you, Treasure Magos in the back that are, were very happy that the parking fund is back and flush and doing really well. So staff's opinion is, we could do that, the value of having the outdoor dining and the traffic that it brings to the community, far outweighs the potential for a space that we're losing for that limited period of time. So we would be in support of doing that, but again, it's up to city council.
Well, I, I just want to say, I'm in support of the
Platform.
Outdoor dining. It's just, it's just who pays for it.
Right.
Mayor Protem, Sylvia?
Yeah, I was, I was going to probably just echo that, that I think the outdoor platforms are great, but to me, this is a cost that should be in the DDA budget. This is encouraging business in our, in our community, and that's, that's a DDA budget mission, so I hope we have them this year, but I, I don't agree with waiving the cost for it.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think a shared expenses, is, I think they're sharing, that would be great for them to share the costs, that they will pay for the, you know, $22,600. I agree with that, that we are for them to do this, and to take out that, and that would be good for them to go ahead and pay for it.
Councilmember Peterson?
So I, I do not support that. I feel that this is the first year after three long years of a pandemic. I think that in good faith, since we have financial stability right now with that, that's a very small cost to add to being a good neighbor as a city to our, to our businesses downtown, because we also have new business coming downtown. I think that it's, which probably in the, and some other ones are going to want to have the outdoor dining, because I think it's great as well, and I think it would be not in good things to go ahead and take away from that, from those businesses that had already been struggling, and a couple of them had been before us already as well.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I also believe that this is part of the DDA's mission to do so. With a $2 million surplus, pretty sure 23K is going to be well contained. And it's, it's what they're charged to do, support the businesses downtown. This is direct support. I do not feel that the city has to take from its general fund to pay for this.
Mayor Protem, Sylvia?
If I would add to that also, even if you said it could come out of the parking fund, we have a million dollars in repairs that we need to do over time on the parking structure. So we, we have costs that even though it's, it's, it's well funded, it's, it's balanced, it's working, we have some additional costs, so we can't just be handing out passes.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So is the city going to give the DDA back the million dollars that they paid for, for the, during COVID? I mean, there has to come a time where we actually do something to give back as well. And 22,000, it's not about the DDA, it's about these business owners that are going to be sharing in the cost. And just because they have money in there, that's what happened last time. To me, I wouldn't put any money in a line item because everyone goes to take it. It happens, happened before, and it'll happen again, and it'll continue happening. I think that it's, says, speaks loudly to those businesses that have struggled through and been a part of so much downtown, on top of the assessments and everything else, on top of paying top dollar for parking spaces, all of it. And right now, I, I don't know why we can't be kind, and I would prefer to have a full council to vote on this one, if we can, at the next meeting.
We have a quorum, so
No, I understand.
So is there a motion?
Not for me.
Councilmember Trent?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the parklets or the spaces that they're asking for, but not for the additional funds, for the 22,600. Is that, is that correct? It's the first motion I've ever made, so.
And the, the dining platforms or parklets, because it's a difference, yeah.
We call them both, but dining platforms.
Okay, dining.
A motion by Councilmember Trent is their support.
The motion is to support the fact that we will have the dining platforms.
But not
But not to fund them.
Correct.
Support.
Support. Further discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, next is a recommendation from the DPW on agreement with Hydrocor for residential cross connection control program, in consideration of ordinance amendments to City Code Chapter 54 Utilities, Article 2, Water Supply and Sewage Treatment System, Division 2, General Regulations, Section 54 dash 264 Cross Connections, introduction and first reading.
That was a mouthful.
Yeah.
I'm not sure everybody in the audience understands all that perfectly.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, is, you're going to see a lot of Alec right now from now on. Now, he's been a busy beaver, and, and a lot, that's okay, a lot, a lot of this stuff, it's not sexy necessarily, none of us are excited about what we have to do, state mandates, but keep an open mind, Councilman Aubrey said, why is this back on the agenda? It's because we, it's a state law that we're mandated to do. So we don't like some of these things, but Alec's going to explain why, and the theory behind everything.
And Alex, we might not like this, but we like you.
I appreciate that, Mayor. So, yeah, this is the same proposal that was on the agenda a month ago. I do want to apologize off the bat, the proposal is actually slightly different, I apologize, I put the one from last month, but there was one slight change that I noticed as I was sitting here reading for coming up here. If you have it in front of you, it's a section 4.2, and instead of having it be just a two year with one year extension, since the program would take five years to complete the entire city, we met with Hydrocor and they were willing to do a two-year contract with the ability to do three one-year extensions. So I'll, I'll just read the, the new 4.2 section out loud, so everyone knows it. Upon the expiration of this two-year agreement, unless either party provides written notice of termination not less than 60 days prior to the expiration of the initial term or any such renewal term, this agreement will automatically renew for up to an additional three years in one-year increments. Inflationary adjustments to each renewal term will be equal to the annual consumer price index as measured in the utilities local slash regional area at the time of renewal or 5%, whichever is less. So that was the only, only change from the last meeting. And that was something that Paul Patterson from Hydrocor was here tonight as well. Pardon? Oh, thanks, Anthony.
Thank you, yeah.
He came in, talked with us at our infrastructure committee meeting as well, answered some more questions, and that was one thing that we talked about in that meeting. And so we did, City Attorney Kraut did draft or make edits to the service agreement that we had the last agenda to reflect those changes, and Hydrocor received a copy of that and was, agreed to it. So I apologize, I did not include it in there, but that was the only change from the last meeting. And like I said before, this is a state law since 2015 to have this requirement to do a residential cross connection control program. Hydrocor has been doing our commercial program for many years now, and they do commercial and residential programs for many, many municipalities across state. I spoke with staff at Rochester Hills, and they have been using Hydrocor for both commercial and residential, and have, and nothing but good things to say about them. I've had a great working relationship with them and everything that they've done with us. They take a big burden off of our back to complete these state mandated programs.
Alec, could you explain, just for people watching, maybe what, what we're talking about, what this device does and what the purpose of it is?
Sure, and maybe Paul can help us.
If you don't mind, Mayor.
This as well. There's, I mean, a few different devices. What they're going to be looking for is doing initial inventory of every house over five years, looking at exterior fixtures to the home, so residents may need to, if they don't have the, you know, the right hose spigot, vacuum breakers on their home, they may be required to, to purchase those, and possibly hire a plumber to install code compliant irrigation system, backflow preventers. There's a good chance that your home already has these, but this is what Hydrocor will be doing inspections for and taking an inventory for to protect our municipal water system from possible bacteria and contamination coming in from the outside. So Paul, if you have any other things to add besides that?
You kind of covered it. Just, are there any questions I can answer?
Well, Paul, maybe again, just to dumb you down a little bit here, we're talking about, so that no one can contaminate our water source. Every sprinkler system in the city, basically, that's ever been installed with a permit has the proper plumbing done through our plumbing inspectors, so it's got backflow preventers. So if, God forbid, something goes wrong, we can't contaminate the water source by pushing back. It's the outside spigots that, been there at my house since 1922, they don't have these things now, but they're little devices that you guys actually give to people, that they put on that will stop that from happening, their vacuum breakers, if you could explain that.
And those have been in the building code now for how many years now?
Years.
But we have houses that were built in 1922.
Well, yes, there are, some houses that are built that were long ago, but you know, it has been a requirement, so it's not that every house is not going to have these, we're just now having, or we're just now required to actually go and inspect them.
And Mr. City Manager, is this a state mandate?
It is.
Councilmember Peterson?
No, I guess I wanted to know exactly how they were going to do it, how they were going to notify the resident, so the resident knew what to expect when they came, and what exactly to look at. And it was brought up at the last meeting that you could actually go and get one yourself if you chose to, to put it in yourself, correct?
Correct, yeah, but they would still need to then hire someone to test it, to get those results to Hydrocor, to give to the state.
So
The outside, no, the outside spigot, no, outside spigot I'm referring to.
Yes, the outside spigots, so, there's a lot to that question, so let's start, how we'd notify, how we'd notify, or how we would begin the program. We kind of started that process already behind the scenes, our marketing department's working with Alec, getting some website content, public education materials put together. If the contract were approved, again, it's a five-year timeframe to get through the entire city, so we would sit down with Alec and just kind of take a map and quadrant out five quadrants, and we would systematically work our way through the city. When we start, we are going to send a letter out to the homeowners to notify them that we are coming, when we will be there, what's, what we're going to look at. And again, this is focusing on the exterior of the home. Yes, again, the why, you know, it is a public health issue, so we try to focus on that. But again, like Alec said, it's really the, the biggest ticket item we're going to find is lawn irrigation. Again, those hose bit vacuum breakers, as part of our proposal, if that's all the homeowner needs, we're going to provide those. But like, like you mentioned, if the homeowner wishes to purchase them before we come out, that's great, but there's really no need for them to do that. We'll provide a code compliant vacuum breaker that they can just screw on the end of their hose connections, and that will put them in compliance.
And just to tag on for, in regards to communicating with residents, like Paul said, he has been providing us with lots of marketing materials that we can give on our website, Facebook. We're currently almost done with the draft of a new kind of water educational booklet, that's going to be kind of a revamped consumer confidence report, so instead of the boring two-page consumer cap's report we always do, it's going to be kind of like a 12-page, like colorful picture booklet of everything water, and so a nice page or two in there talking about the program, what's to come, and that sort of thing. So we're figuring out ways to spread the word as best as possible.
Mayor Protem, Sylvia?
Thank you, thank you. So I think this is really important, you know, water, quality water safety is really important, and obviously, it's a state mandate, so we have to. Question about, at, at the end of the five years, so we've gone through the whole city, is this every, we keep doing this forever, or once we've gone through the houses, or is it a reduced contract going forward? How does that work?
Yeah, that's a great question. Let me start answering that by kind of letting you know how we came up with five years, okay? It wasn't just a random number that we thought, hey, we should target five years. According to Public Act 399, those vacuum breakers for lawn irrigation have to be tested once every five years. So the theory was, let's get through the entire city so that everybody has to do that test once. once before we're asking people to do it a second. Um, because in the first year, our office and probably your office is gonna get a phone call saying, hey, why are you picking on me? I have this, but so does Joe who lives across town, you know, and he didn't get this letter. Well, we can point to the quadrant and say, well, you're in quadrant one, Joe's in quadrant three. So, before you have to do this again, Joe will also have to do it. So, that's how we came up with the five years. The Public Act does not define an inspection frequency. It just refers to periodic re-inspections. But then in that act, it says the utility should use the guidance manual provided by Eagle as a reference. In that guidance manual, it says every water connection has to be inspected once every five to 10 years. So, after the five years, there'll be a choice to make. Okay, you can take five years off and not do anything and then come back and do them all again in a five-year period. Or reduce that down to put everybody on a 10-year period, and then it would be, you know, roughly half the contract moving forward. But again, that's because it's periodic re-inspections. It would be something that would continually have to be done, just like the commercial program.
Okay. And then follow on with that. This is not currently in our water rates, right? So, we probably need to revise our water rates to take this into account.
Wow.
And I don't believe that this was, Anthony, unless you have anything to add to that, I don't think this was included when the water rates were last.
And if we pass the, if we pass the inspection fee on to the resident, then we wouldn't have to raise the rates. It's only if the city wants to cover the cost of all the inspections. We had talked about that.
Uh, we have it in the budget just for next year. We did not have it in for multiple years. So, the agreement, and as it's going, if we're gonna, uh, go into it, we need to add it in for years two and out.
But it's not in the water rate. So, um, we did our water rate study, uh, past few years.
Just for one year. Cause we knew there was gonna be an amount for it. So, I put in an amount, but I did not put it in annually. So.
It's in the budget. It's in the budget. But is it in the water rate that we, that consumers pay?
It's, I would say the answer is yes for one year, not for the additional. Cause when we did the rates, it was in the budget when we did the rates, at that time for the second year. So, we don't have it in there for the third. When we did the rates last year, it was two years out for this next budget year. We had it in there for just the one year.
So, next time we redo the rates?
We need to consider.
We need to consider this.
The other rest of it.
Okay, thank you.
Has it been an ongoing program?
Okay.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a few questions. One, I guess for administration as well. No, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Go ahead. I didn't, I didn't see.
No, so go ahead. And just, you kind of lose your train of thought when there's discussion. Okay. So, all right, so it was stated by administration, if I heard it right, that when it came to the lawn sprink, lawn sprinkler systems, those are tested through the city with the permit, or you're just given a permit when they put them in?
No, I, it was first half of the equation. So, they're required to put them in, but not necessarily have it tested. This is what requires the testing. So, the good news is somebody has, doesn't have to come and revamp their whole sprinkler system because they're put in with vacuum breakers, but they will have to have them inspected as part of this program.
Yeah, that requirement, it's been in the plumbing building code.
Right.
For a while now. So, they have this sprinkler system installed recently. You're, it's more than likely gonna be done right, and you don't, you're not gonna have to add any to it.
Okay, so then, and then just for clarity, how do you actually test the outside spigot to make sure there's no cross-contamination being done?
There's no test on the spigot. It's just a visual inspection. It either has a vacuum breaker or it doesn't.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, uh, again, as part of the contract, we're gonna provide that to the homeowners. So, we're not doing actual water sampling. It's just making sure the right devices are there, um, to prevent the possible contamination.
All right, so what does that cost per household right now to have an inspection? Do we have that broken down yet?
I did not break it down.
Thirty-seven hundred divided, the number divided by about thirty-seven.
Fifty-one thousand dollars a year divided by.
Thirty-seven hundred.
Eight fifty.
No, it's really doing what was it, eight hundred?
Eight fifty, nineteen hundred, nineteen hundred every two years. So, eight fifty per year.
Right, okay. No, I was, I'm just curious.
Divided by fifty-one thousand.
To find out only because if we're going to have to put it in the water rate, how much to anticipate, because that's, that's a lot of money, right, on top of the high rates already. And my biggest question right now is because this is a big program with a big expense, why wasn't this part of goals and objectives to, to know that it was coming? So.
We, we didn't have a meeting like that, so we brought up a couple of meetings ago to start the process.
But see, these are the things I think that, I understand that because we didn't have the meeting, but I think this is where we're missing the boat on having, not having enough goals and objective meetings. So, each department can bring forth these types of things that are going to totally affect the budget across the board and the residents. And now water rates, I mean, this is, this is big. And we can't, I mean, we continually have to raise water rates. So, that's been, we've done it a lot, and I think it's just something that if we had projects like this and goals and objectives and we had additional meetings, it would make it a lot less, um, cumbersome here at the meeting to ask these questions and understand it and know in advance what it's going to cost people before we vote, whether it's state mandated or not. I, I don't care if it's state mandated or not because it still costs us, the city, and the taxpayer.
Uh, Councilmember Peterson, same to your question, previous question. It's roughly about fifty-four dollars per residential account.
And that's a one-time? Or is it going to be every year? Cause if you test a, that's why I want clarity. When you're going to test, uh, the outside spigot and they have one of those on, you're gonna come back, what, once every five years?
Uh, after that, it'd be once every 10 years.
Every 10? So, but it's fifty-four dollars for that little, the one-time inspection to come? Like, I'm gonna get mine done tomorrow, say, right? So, in 10 years.
Yeah, that's taking the two-year amount of a hundred and three thousand, three sixty-eight and just dividing by the, um, nineteen hundred homes that is projected to do inventory over those two years.
Right. But you understand where I'm coming from. It's, you know, that fifty-four dollars is a lot. And how many times is a resident going to be charged it? That's all.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Just for clarity, that charge would be once every 10 years?
In theory, in theory.
The way it's set up, we will not be charging the residents. It would be a cost that the city would pay for through the water and sewer fund, just like what we do with the commercial side.
Okay, so, we mentioned, Anthony mentioned, that it's contained within the first two years.
First one year.
One year. So, we have to vote on this each year, or?
The current proposal would be a two-year contract with the, um, ability to extend three separate times for a year each. And so then hypothetically, this would be approved tonight. Uh, we would then have the ability to, it would automatically, automatically renew after two years for one-year increments. You know, if either side said we want to stop, it would automatically be nil. Hypothetically, we would be back here in five years deciding if we wanted to do.
But we can't stop because it's state mandated.
No, 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 we would keep going. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so we would, it would be five years of them, you know, we just, the contract would be for five years. So, we go on tonight, but we'd be, they'd be doing it for five years and we'd be setting objectives for five years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there a motion out there?
Oh, not yet.
Mayor, or Councilmember Trent?
I, I just trying to understand. So, you put, so it's fifty-two thousand, correct? For?
Uh, just up there, yeah.
Yeah, just under, for the year that you put it in, that Anthony put it in the budget. Uh, I mean, he put it in the, the water rates were more, he added in the water rates. So, how come if it's added in the water rates for the next year, does he lower the water rates to take it out? Cause it's, then it's in there. Like, the fifty-two thousand's in there. Like, try to, I'm trying to understand the math.
Anthony may be able to answer this better than I was, better than I am. But I believe this has been in the budget for the past couple of years now. Cause with the turnover and directors in this position, HydroCorp's been working with the city for a few years now, giving us proposals for this program. So, I know it's, it has been budgeted for multiple years in the past. The city's just never pulled the trigger.
But he said it was in the water rates for one year. That was what I was trying to understand, unless I misunderstood that.
Uh, correct. It's in there for, uh, there's fifty thousand in it, but just for a year. So, when we look at the water rates, we're making sure we have enough to fund over the immediate, any immediate projects and looking at where we're heading over the next couple of years in relation to the fund balance. So, what this would end up doing if, with some inflation factors and that, let's say, so we're budgeting three years, right? So, we have fifty thousand, uh, it was fifty and some change annual.
Fifty-one, six, eighty-four.
So, call it fifty a year. So, we need to add a hundred thousand dollars more for years two and three. So, we have one year at fifty, and we do not have year two and three for fifty and fifty. So, when we look at, are the rates sustainable over the three years, we need to add a hundred thousand and more cost, and then look at the rates as Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Salvia stated, um, uh, when we do the rates this upcoming season.
I see. Okay, all right. Thanks. I didn't know they were needing to be revisited every year.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. Um, thank you for clarifying, um, all of those comments. And I, I think we'll probably have a lot more discussion as a city, um, and as residents become aware of this program. Um, but I would like to make a motion that we, um, approve the proposal submitted by HydroCorp and authorize the city staff to sign a service agreement with HydroCorp, and then also approve the draft ordinance with amendments to Section 54, dash, 264. Support.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, support by Councilmember Peterson. Is there further discussion?
First reading and introduction.
First reading and introduction.
For first reading and introduction, yes.
No.
No, they didn't do anything.
We didn't get that far last time out. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you for your information tonight.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next we have a, this doesn't seem like yours.
Yeah, no, Alec gets a break for one, one item.
It's like, Alex, you're on a liquor license as now. Next is a request to accept a liquor license application to transfer the liquor license from City Tavern at 421 South Main Street to JVY Holdings and set the required public hearing for April 24th, 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Or by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Onto reports and regular business is a presentation from the DPW Director of the 2019 Flow Monitoring Report Approval from Eagle. So, that does sound like the DPW.
Yep, and Alex back here for the next few. And this is a really good report. This is something, when I saw this from, um, I think it's Hoda at, um, Eagle, we were.
Hala.
Hala, for, at Eagle. It's, she's a really close friend with the CEO, Putros. And as good as friends as they were, the CEO's been pushing Hala for years to get us this report. Remember, um, many years back, we committed as a city to try to stop the infiltration of groundwater, illicit connections, all kinds of stuff that was going into our sanitary sewer. Um, so if you can picture, everything that gets in the sewer comes to a master meter at the end of the line, and we pay for that on volume. So, water that does not come from sanitary, from toilets or from wherever else, ground, um, drains, et cetera, we were paying for that. So, we were on a mission for two reasons. For me, for the economic development guy, this was the biggest reason. We got told by Eagle in writing, if you don't reduce your rates of flow, in two years, we're gonna stop, we're gonna put a cap on how much residential development you can build in the city. So, it affected where Mosheri was going to build, where Milltown was gonna build, the cement plant, First Street Lofts, Riverfront, they were gonna cap us at no more units until you do something. So, we spent, I think, 1.9 million putting a giant sewer along the trail that went under Paint Creek, and we got pegged at the Suave property in order to expand the capacity to move that, that, um, sewage. Step one. Step two, stop free water from getting in this program. So, the, with the team from AEW went through and sealed manholes. They were in the forest looking for things that were disconnected. We found.
That was the smoke testing, if you had.
Exactly. Let's remember that. So, it came up in parking lots and basements and sinks. And so, the results of all of that hard work was Alex can give you right now, which is the best news for me, economic development. Why is that? We're good.
Fantastic.
Sorry, pretty much covered the race.
Yeah, there you go.
I get, I'm excited about this because it was such a big thing.
Two big things. I mean, this lifts a, um, oratorum that we had on, uh, new development in the city. Um, maybe we restricted it to, I think, just 500 new units. Um, so, that's gone. And then, um, the system now, let me find the number. I believe it's around 40% more capacity in our system than as before. So, they were, they were taking results from a 2013 study and then comparing them to a, uh, the study that was just done in 2019 to 2020. And so, even with growth, growth over that time, the reduction, um, with what was done is about to 40% greater capacity in the sewer system, and also reduces our costs that we pay for all of our, um, metered sewage going to the county. So, wins out lots of fronts.
It'll help us keep our sewer rates down because we're not, that's a pass-through, right?
Yep.
So, um, great work by everybody involved in this. And it took a commitment to start from the city council to pretty much drain that water and sewer fund and put that big sewer in, and then all this backwork and cammering and smoke tests. And Alex, right, there's, and we got great cooperation from the private property. There's, you would think, we, we went to someone and said, you have to rip up your whole system and disconnect that pipe under your basement floor, not residents, too much, there's one, I think, um, but commercial, to get this out of here or at your cost. And they did it. So, I think we have one commercial that it's almost impossible to get at, at this point, which is BP. They had some coming in from their roof drains, but other than that, we did a great job of taking care of this business. So, congratulations.
Yeah, there are, there are many municipalities out there that still have combined sewer systems. And, you know, so I think we really deserve to pat ourselves on the back. And when I was, Jason Dickinson's here, and he was, he was around and helping to manage all those projects a few years ago to help, um, reduce all that infiltration. So, kudos to him as well and the rest of the team.
Great. Um, Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you. Congrats and great work to everyone. So, what does the process, process look like going forward? Is this like one and done, or do we ask them to do this every five years, or do we, do we not want them to come and check? What, what does this look like going forward?
Maybe you're wrong on this one. Nick may have to fill in, but I believe this came from, um, our capacity was reaching a point where we were basically about to bust. And so Eagle was coming to us saying, all right, you need to do something to fix this, uh, because it's not looking good. So, I don't think it was a matter of, um, there's nothing we need to do now in the future. Um, there was, it was, it was a problem then, and Eagle came to us because.
Yeah, it really is a one and done because unless everything broke that we just fixed, um, so it's, everything that comes in now is properly done residential and commercial. So, this was, hey, you're gonna have to invest some time and years and money, and then you're fixed the problem.
But what about?
Being a lot more proactive now. It'll be something I talk about later on in the meeting, um, with sewer lining projects and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next is a recommendation from the DPW on agreement with Apartment Services for Lawn Services at Mount Avon Cemetery. Alex.
Okay, so the city has been contracting with Department Services Company for over 40 years now for lawn maintenance at Mount Avon Cemetery. I believe Mount Avon was actually their first cemetery client ever. And they have treated us spectacularly ever since. They are a company that I never really have to deal with, which is great for someone like me. That's worth a million dollars to me. You know, they, they do, not with the cutting weld, but they've got in-house abilities to, um, fix headstones and do any other sort of minor repairs like that. Um, so, city staff have received a proposal for them for a two-year con, or two-year contract with a, um, ability for a third-year extension based on negotiated prices. Um, and we did receive two other quotes from other companies that came in, um, actually higher than what Apartment Services was wanting for or was requesting. Um, so, we really believe that we, we would like Apartment Services to continue, um, working with the city. Um, I think because we were, I believe we were their first cemetery customer, and they've really taken it to heart and have treated us very well.
And I might, what triggered this is our five years. We say, it doesn't matter how good you're doing, we're gonna go out and bid it. And as a neighbor of the cemetery, it's the, it's the best group I've ever seen work. They're so cognizant, they're, they're considerate, um, they're clean, they're efficient. Um, but again, we, we, the five-year trigger came in, so that's why we went out to bid.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Apartment Services Company for Mount Avon Cemetery, uh, Mount Avon Lawn Servicing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, second by the Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Trent.
Uh, yes, I really do appreciate that they're the lowest bid and they're the trust.
Yes, I really do appreciate that they're the lowest bid and they're the trusted, longtime vendor. But if I vote yes on this, after reading the bid, which includes political opinions of the current state of the employment and the economy, I just don't want it to set a precedent that vendors need to send a three and a half single space letter on their political opinion and share their frustrations. Because me, as a business owner, small business owner, I do have frustrations as well. So I just wanted to make that statement. And I'd also like to say that I appreciate that our city employee, because with the letter that was accompanying his bid, went beyond the scope of work. He also asked our city employee to please take a look at his letter and mark it up with any revisions that our city employee would like to see and put them on and he would rescind it. And I don't think that's proper from all the business I have done with cities. And I think that I wanted to bring that to other vendors. That is not a way to do it.
Lots of companies kind of just say that to us and we just say, oh, nope, it's fine. It's under switch, whatever you have and so.
Yeah, the other vendors were just singles based, scope of work. And I'd also like to say that on the herbicides and pesticides, make sure that he knows that we don't use Neonyx and that it's not a golf course. And I really appreciate that I have, I used to live next to the cemetery and they do do a good job and I don't see them overusing herbicides. I think they're very careful and I think they do take a good care of the cemetery.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that. I think they do a good job. I was actually, I think here when, I remember where we had trouble with people at the cemetery and we brought them in, they did a great job. I would have to agree, though, this little diatribe was, to me, very unprofessional. They probably shouldn't have done that.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just, if I may, I just want, I want to say, you know, I think that the hard part is, is today because I read that in a different light, that those letters, I read them as people are trying to explain the reasoning for higher cost than what they, you know, normally would have been, even though they had been with us for so long, so.
Next is a resolution supporting the Pink Creek Trailways Commission's Michigan National Resource Trust Fund grant application for the Pink Creek Bridge replacement. Alex.
So the Pink Creek Trail Commission is submitting a grant application to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. As part of that, resolution must be approved by city council stating the city supports grant application and that we have submitted matching funds in total of one hundred ninety-one thousand seven hundred sixty through the Transportation Alternatives Program grant to be used as match for the trust fund grant as well.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
And then I will say too, and maybe Councilmember Sage can add on to this, but Melissa's last day is a few weeks from now.
Up to the next meeting, yeah?
Yeah.
I'll speak to that in my update.
Yeah, she's been great to work with, super on the ball, very thorough, very detailed.
She's awesome.
Good luck to her.
Seems like we have a lot of potential grants for that bridge.
We're getting them all.
Hopefully.
We're getting them all.
That bridge is going to be in good shape.
Hey, Alex.
Next, we have a presentation from the DPW Director of the proposed infrastructure capital plan.
Again, as Alex comes up, these are the kind of things I think Councilwoman Peterson was talking about. So we have to take this opportunity at these meetings to do some of these things. And we try to streamline the process for the budget. So that's why this is here tonight. We shared with a committee member and we're cognizant of the fact that that means three or two, in some cases. Councilpeople get to see this information, we want everybody to see it. And that's right, we're doing it tonight. And it's good, the public gets to see this at the same time. So I think it's a productive use of this few moments.
Yeah, so I did a kind of brief summary write-up in my memo and then I put together just a very simple slideshow with pictures to kind of put some images to words to make it a little easier to talk about. So we'll start talking about roads first. This is a Paser rating scale that I'm sure you guys have seen before. So everyone knows what the Paser rating is, it's what we use to assign to our roads, to value its condition. So ten being excellent, the best, it's a brand-new road, one, two being it's going to fall apart next year. So when you have ten, I mean, that's your basic routine maintenance. You know, a year or two after a new road or mill and fill, you might look at doing some crack sealing, minor things to prolong a new road. Looking, you know, between sixes and fours, that's more of a preventative maintenance, that's you're doing mill and fills, other sorts of seal cuts like that. And then when we get down to three twos and ones, I mean, that's when you want to really look at a total reconstruction of the road and trying to find areas where you can compare that with other utility replacements and do more of a total street coach, two replacements and try and save money. Yeah, I figured this was going to happen. It might look up or show up easier on the screen in front of you.
Yeah.
It's in your packet as well, so that might be easier to look at. But this is our, looking at our mill and fill schedule for the next four years with red being proposed for two thousand twenty-three. And then this summer is also the last summer of our current DWSRF project. So we'll be doing utility replacements and road reconstruct on South Castell and why am I blanking on the second road?
Wilcox.
Wilcox, but also
Wesley.
Wesley, thank you. And then this will be the last summer for that. So moving forward, we'd be looking at, that's the next slide, but looking at other roads where we have the possibility to do more of a reconstruction process. So we're looking at trying to spend around five hundred thousand dollars a year in mill and fills. All the roads chosen are in our four to five Paser rating window. And all of them have utilities underneath that aren't in need of replacement or upsizing or that sort of thing. I do want to point out, I think I mentioned this in an infrastructure committee meeting, but because MDOT has pushed back their M one fifty Rochester Road reconstruction project to two thousand twenty-six now, they changed to, that day seems to be always squirting away from us. But they have committed to coming in between the months of May and June of the summer to do some skip patching work on Rochester Road to kind of give us a little bit of life and so they come in and do the complete reconstruct. So they gave us that two-month window, but it should only take them a couple of days to come in and do the work, so, yes.
Quick question for administration, are you Alec, regarding the South Castell? Is that the piece that winds into Harding? So are they going to?
First all the way around, that's going to be a tough one.
We're currently trying to coordinate a schedule with a toponio or contractor so we can start getting communications out and getting the word out that your usual shortcut won't be available and you're going to have to go around.
So we have to, are we coordinating with Rochester Hills then? That's going to be a real tough one.
That's a tough one.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, like I said, we were hoping to get toponio in spring and early summer, but we haven't been able to pinpoint a schedule with them yet.
It would be best if they held off until after school was out.
I think that's the plan.
So like I said, we look at trying to average it out to about five hundred thousand dollars a year in mill and fill roads. These are all roads that are four to five Paser rating and don't have any utilities underneath that are in need of replacements.
I have one other question if I may.
Yeah, feel free to, you know, whenever it pops up.
No, I know, just regarding the mill and fill, is there a reason why we only do two inches instead of three or do a different base?
This should be for three inch.
You're doing the three?
Yep.
Okay, so three base and three top, not just the two?
We would still need to do sample boring on all of them to make sure we know what we're working with, but that would be the plan, potentially.
I can, Jason's taught me this, the reason we did twos, there was no good base. So if we went down any deeper, we disturbed the base, now you might as well reconstruct all the things.
I just wanted an answer.
Good question.
Okay.
So any question on kind of the theories to madness on this?
Can we go to the full Paser rating map?
I did not put it on this because it was just going to look like colorful spaghetti, but I figured it was in your packet.
So how do we call out in that? So there are certain roads in the city that are not maintained by the city. So how do I call those out on that map?
Seriously, like private roads?
Correct.
That, we deal with those like any other road clients?
I think we should call it out on the map.
As private roads?
So in subdivision developments?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a few, there's Cumberland, there's Antique Woods, there's Baldwin.
Baldwin.
Yeah.
We should.
So we, I think that's a good idea, we could identify those.
Okay.
I believe even other Baldwin were on the Paser rating map.
Oh, they are, they're at zero.
Yeah, so you'll see on the next slide here, they're an area where they have a very low Paser rating. Do we have a red?
Pointer?
Pointer over here, Nick, do you know?
I don't think we do.
Actually, I think they're at two.
Yeah, but they're private, so.
And there, yeah, and there's homeowners association fees collected to do those?
Yes. So it's been, yeah, it's been an ongoing, and it's a little frustrating for the residents, I'm sure, because they, just like Cumberland, they're like, fix my road and my sidewalk's broken. It's like, those are yours. You collect monthly condo, I'm sorry, yearly condo association fees, monthly rent checks, that's supposed to fix your own road. So at one point in the Miller Baldwin area, we had meetings out there and unfortunately, the city probably got a little too involved in telling the people, oh, well, just turn them over to us. That's like three million dollars worth of work that we would have to do. So we've straightened that out now and we're working with the, I think there's four associations or five out there. Five, five, that we're trying to
The frustrating thing is fifty years ago, the city decided that you'd let that be a private road.
Yeah, it's weird, it's very weird.
Well, that was because it was controlled by the association.
It's a strange one though, because it looks like a private, a public road, but it's not.
Yeah, it does.
But we can certainly identify those.
And so, yeah, this map here is showing areas where poor Paser rating, twos, threes, you know, calling for reconstruction are paired up with water main underneath that's undersized and old and in need of replacement. So when we went and decided on roads for our current DWSRF project application, we've gone, this is kind of the map we were looking at a few years ago. And so looking to the future and next areas for complete road reconstructions, these are where we're going to want to be looking. So your major thoroughfare isn't here, we're looking at Parkdale, we're looking at First Street and then a handful of the downtown streets and West Side local roads as well.
So when did you have slated for First Street? Is that slated at no timeframe? Only because if they're going to start all that construction down at Walnut and First, I mean, it would have to be after that then.
Currently, these aren't on any schedule.
Okay.
This is just showing what we should be looking at when trying to plan out for future total road reconstruction projects.
I would just keep that in mind.
Yeah, absolutely, we're meeting with Mr. Rand Aswell's team next week because he's coming in for a Bronfield ask and then, when are you going to do this? And you're absolutely right, until that project's done, which is probably four or five years, then we would not touch that road because we'd destroy it immediately, so.
Okay.
Gotcha.
And there are a couple lengthy CIP or capital improvement plans in your packet. One was created by DLZ for the drinking water system. And towards the end of that list, it does allow prices for some of these complete road reconstruction projects.
That was a nice report by them.
Yes, and it's my goal moving forward to make sure that that's something that we have constantly updated every year and used as a living document part of the budgeting process. So we're always thinking, not just three, but twenty years, thirty years in the future.
So Alec, along those lines, looking at complete streets, you're kind of working through what would, when would that, when would be working on those? So maybe like two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, so we can build up funds to do those? Because we currently don't have
Correct.
Those level funds in our budget.
Yeah, that's why they're not in any sort of media schedule right now. And when thinking about complete streets, I mean, Public Works, we only care about, you know, the utilities and roads, that kind of stuff. But we also should be looking at, you know, pedestrian and bicycle traffic. And, you know, when you tear a road up, that's the time to really think about, you know, every little piece of that right of way that we can use for what the city, would best fit the city.
And we've identified, if I may, we identified gaps in sidewalks, things like that, that we can try to pick these things up while we're doing these projects. So the hope is in three years from now, these, some of these big developers get going here and that's new tax dollars and that's where you all will have the pleasure of what do we do with the next dollar that we get in, right? So if we get our labor situation stabilized, then we start looking at how do we fund these projects? And if we're lucky enough to get the DWRF funds, things like that, we can stretch our dollars bonding, things like that. So that's the beauty of the three-year plan.
Another upside to having these long-range plans that really, you know, have some teeth to it is we can give these to private utility companies, like, you know, communication companies and private companies that, you know, we can show them, look, like, if you can wait three years for us to open the street up, you know, then you can come in, it's a lot easier for you to put your stuff in while we're putting our stuff in as opposed to them coming in now and they're usually boring, but, you know, it's still, can cause a mess. And so if we can coordinate with private utilities too, that's just even better. And the state of Michigan, sorry to interrupt.
No, you're
The state of Michigan is really trying to push hard on that too, of that coordination with private utilities. To, at the state level, they're creating, they have a whole database now and they're really trying to create the infrastructure, no one intended, to really try and have those coordinated meetings.
And it'll help us with looking down the future if there's grant opportunities or the government comes up with, hey, here's some road and bridge money, we're going to be ready to take advantage of that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For administration then, so are all those projects and things that DLZ spoke of and everything that DPW put together, are those going to all be part of goals and objectives then? So we'll actually get those in goals and objectives to see how we're planning that out?
Not this goal and objective.
Oh, not this one, correct.
As we go, right, that's the matrix that we'll have, that we'll be able to say, hey, we're looking down twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on this map right here? So move forward. So this is something that's a recent work in progress. So at the last infrastructure committee meeting, I mentioned that we just finished CCTVing all of our sanitary and storm sewer older than twenty years. And so since that meeting, we've actually got the results back and AEW has put together a project plan for areas that are in need of CIPP, which is cured employees pipes, that's the lining of the pipe. So you just have two pits on both sides or you can use manholes to do the lining. So it's a lot less intrusive. And then the other thing that we need to do is an open cut where we actually need to cut to the pavement and reconstruct more failed systems. So we have just put this one actually out to bid for a bid opening next Tuesday to see what prices we're looking at. Current engineered estimate for to complete all of these is about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So earlier in the meeting, when we were talking about, I think Nancy had asked, you know, what are we doing now in the future? These are the types of things we're doing to be, to kind of have that preventative maintenance and future-looking to make sure that we are, you know, continually trying to find ways to reduce our INI into our sanitary sewer system. And then so this is the map of areas for open copper sanitary and storm sewer. This is estimated at about two hundred thousand dollars. But this one's going to need a little bit more thinking involved because we're going to, since we have to actually open the road up, you know, we're going to look at ways that we can, you know, the road could use a, any other preventative maintenance around it. You know, we didn't want to try and coordinate that, so we were trying to be the least intrusive to the residents in that neighborhood. And then the plan would be to start, I think, in the wastewater CIP list. The plan was to then continuing to do, to keep CCTVing newer, under, stuff that's under twenty years old, sanitary and storm sewer starting in, to do twenty twenty-eight. So once we fix what's been identified, we can go back and start doing some more research to figure out. And more than likely, the newer stuff's not going to have too many problems. But that's kind of how we can now start the cycle of being preventative with our storming sewer infrastructure. Any questions on that stuff? So looking more on the drinking water side. So kind of the three big drinking water projects that we need to start or have been pining for are the Eastside Water Booster Station, so that's right there on the corner of Dequender and Parkdale by the are the East Side Water Booster Station, so that's right there on the corner of Dequender and Parkdale by the Onyx Ice Arena. The water main replacement under Main Street, when M.D. comes in and re-does that reconstruction. And then the third was, um, two water main looping projects that we're currently still in kind of an investigative mode with those. Uh, we're going to be having DLZ and our water staff do some more hydrant flow testing, just to make sure that this is the project we really need to do. You know, we don't want to spend money on something that we just kind of have to do. And we want to make sure it's something that we really need to do. Um, so these two images right here are just showing on the left what's currently there on that corner. So that's where water, um, enters our system from, from Shelby. Um, so that has our GLWA meter, um, has the PRV pit that was just installed, uh, what was that, Jason? Two years ago? Two, three years ago. So PRV or the pressure-reducing valve, that's, you know, that's making sure that water is not coming in at too high of a pressure. But the problem is, we're having sometimes periods where water is coming in at too low of a pressure. And so GLWA is technically meeting their, you know, obligations for what they're providing us, but we have some areas in the, on the east side of town at a higher elevation where, um, you know, their water pressure is, is still at a safe level, but it's, um, there can be periods where it's, it's a, it's a pretty low pressure compared to other parts of that system. And so this water booster station would be, um, would be proposed to provide a more consistent, constantly consistent pressure going into the east side water su- water system. And then that's listed on the CIP list as well, um, at one point six million dollars. And then so we've got these two areas for the water main looping. Um, the first one here is at Letica, um, and Creek Point. And the, the whole point of these, uh, looping projects is, um, dead ends are kind of the, the worst enemy for water mains. And unfortunately, engineers must, at least utility engineers must not have been involved for designing neighborhoods in the nineties, because they loved cul-de-sacs and dead ends. Um, so in those dead ends is where, especially in these higher, higher, higher elevation areas, you can have sediment collects. I mean, we, we do routinely go and flush these areas, um, to make sure that that's not happening, but, um, this will provide for, for a consistent flow and better pressure. And, um, it's really more for, uh, fighting fires, but there's been some back and forth with fire department and with our DLZ engineering to, just to really make sure this is something that's needed. So with these two projects and the second one being at, um, Boulder Court and Miners Run, um, doing some more hydrant flow testing, you know, trying to create a model to give us a, a more accurate description of what's, what's really going on out there, to make sure that these two projects are actually needed. And that should be happening here in the very near future. And then moving on, this is the, the bridge that we've been talking about now for so many months. I, I figured, um, since these, these drawings are, are pretty recent, so it'd be nice to see what it is that we're actually talking about. Um, so if you can picture what the bridge looks like now, um, you know, we're going to have a little mini Mackinac Bridge here pretty soon. It's going to look really nice. This is the same, same design, the same layout as the bridge that was built in, um, Oakland Township, thank you, Nick. So, um, this was just released, um, what was it, a couple, two, one or two weeks ago.
And, and, um, this one, I'm such an advocate because of, um, the commitments of Pink Creek has a cold water, natural reproducing trout stream. I've got five chapters of tea writing letters to Eagle now saying, how did you not give them points for clear fish passage here? Those abutments in that river jam up every single year. It takes five groups of people to come out there in that water with chainsaws and ropes to get it out of there. This would solve that entire problem and keep the flow going. So I've got all those chapters writing letters of support. Melissa did a great job writing a grant. I can't believe that they just kind of blew us off, and we're not happy. So we're going to keep going at them to try to get some help from the cold water side.
Yep, and, I mean, more than likely, this is going to, this is going to have to be a grant-funded project. Um, so we're at the mercy of applying for grants, and that's, like I said before, Melissa did a very, very good job of being atop all those and applying for everything that she could. So kudos to her. Any questions on the, on the bridge?
Thanks for showing the picture.
Here, build it.
Yeah. What's that?
Build it. Do it.
Um, and so that's it with my slideshow. I just ended with just a, a map of the city. We wanted to have that up there as we, as we talk about things. Um, one other item from my memo I want to talk about was, um, looking at the parking decks. I know, um, Councilmember Salvia had mentioned that we've got a report that was done by Fishback Engineering, a consultant of the city's, uh, this past summer, of a, um, kind of a condition assessment of both parking decks. But reports came out that both parking decks are in generally good condition. There's nothing that's deemed critical. Um, however, they did list out, you know, multiple items that are in need of replacement here soon, and some preventive maintenance work. Both the reports totaled out about just shy of a million dollars for all the work to be done on both decks. Superintendent, um, Dickinson has been working with a company called DC Buyers to try and, um, put together a more cost-effective plan. Uh, DC Buyers has been a company that's done work on the parking decks in the past and, um, know the infrastructure pretty well. Um, so we're looking to really focus on those repairs over the next three years, um, and getting those out of the way and trying to be, you know, quick and preventative on those, as opposed to letting them fall to the wayside and making them become, as opposed to a million-dollar problem, you know, a three or four million-dollar problem, which is where you don't want to be. Especially with how much use these parking decks get, there's a lot of eyes on them. There's a lot of vehicles going in and out of those. You know, we want to make sure that they, we're, we're really maintaining this, um, this asset and this infrastructure to, um, to the best that it can be. Um, with the intention then, once those, um, items have been addressed, we can then go and start looking at the parking lots again and, um, planning on the needed, uh, reconstruction for a couple of those lots and then preventive maintenance for the rest of them. And luckily, we had done the crack ceiling and fog ceiling on a lot of those downtown lots just this past summer, and so that should be good, you know, hold enough for, for two or so, two or three years to, um, buy us some time before we go back and address them again.
Uh, yes, for administration, when will the parking, uh, committee be meeting again, since we haven't heard from them in quite some time?
Yeah, it's kind of on a need basis, but we started putting an agenda together last week, so I, I bet you in the next thirty days.
Okay.
Mayor Proton Salvia?
Thank you, Alec. I just wanted to thank you for, um, what a comprehensive approach you're taking to the city's infrastructure plan. Uh, we had a pretty good plan, but have never seen all the pieces pulled together the way you've done it and presented. Um, it's excellent. Um, and I, I think really now we're, we've got the ball moving in the right direction where you're, like you said, you're, we can have a twenty-year plan, looking at all the levels, levels, water, sewer, roads. Um, one ask I would have in this, actually two. One is, keep knocking on every door to get every grant we can find. I, I know you're trying, and, um, right now it seems like you have to be a certain type of city to get some grants, and we're not that type of city. So just keep knocking, because these are some big dollars that, um, we need to find some federal and state money for. Um, and then also, as we're forecasting and looking forward, I, I think we need to come up with some sort of inflation factor to put in all of these estimates that we have, so that we can logically think about if we delay this project, is, how much more is it going to cost us in the future if we don't do it now?
Yeah, we'll definitely, you know, definitely work with Anthony, his finance team's really, in the past, it's always just been, you know, three percent, but you, in today's world, you know, you, it's probably high, but you never know. So we'll, we'll figure out a, a model, you know, to, to, to make it make sense, but I agree with that.
Thank you very much, Alec. Excellent report.
Yeah, thank you.
I think, I think you can probably now rest.
Yeah, thanks, and I appreciate all the kind words, and, you know, it's, um, it's going to take a good year or two to get, you know, the CIP list really bundled together and, you know, get working for us. And it's kind of like, you know, it's kind of like a big, big boat. It takes a little bit to get it going, but once it get going, once it gets going, it's, it's my sailing, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. It was great.
Is a request to schedule a public hearing on May eighth, two thousand and twenty, for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four annual budget.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Now onto your review report from the various boards and commission. This is a report from the DDA authority. Uh, I think Marilyn was not able to attend, so I will give the report. Um, we were going to have the accreditation presentation by, uh, John Bry from the county, but he was ill, so he is coming next time, um, to present that. We had a very, um, robust economic development update by Nick. A lot of stuff going on in the city. One of the next council meetings, I think we should probably have that, because there's a lot of exciting things going on. We had the town square, front porch, however, whatever you want to call that, project update. They're supposedly going to have some numbers in April and then have, present it to the DDA, and then they're going to present it to us at the next meeting after that. And, and also their budget was sent over, so, you know, it's a pretty, pretty tight timeframe, um, but they're going to try to get that, um, to the city council. The Christie and team are now in Boston, attending the Main Street Development, uh, Conference, and, uh, I think that was pretty much it. Anything else next?
So just, yeah, just to clarify, so when will council see the DDA budget? Because I, we have not seen anything from the DDA yet.
Uh, Anthony, maybe you can come up and talk about how, how the DDA budget and then that town square part of that budget is gonna, is gonna look? If, if you know.
Uh, the budget has been given to the DDA. I'm not sure if it's the one that they approved has been given to council yet in a report, but it has been published in their, uh, documents. Council will normally, in the budget process here, the DDA is asked and request at a meeting, and I'd have to check the schedule and the date, because it would normally be this meeting, but they're in, um, because of the vacations. This would normally be the DDA PSD budget presentation would be tonight.
Got it.
And so it's going to be April.
Correct.
Um, and then you're also going to get the full binder and everything shortly after that, like that following week. So that's the, the one piece, getting all the infrastructure stuff to council, because that's what you're going to see built out in the budget. Getting the DDA PSD presentation is kind of the last piece, um, and then you'll have the full, uh, binder with all the details in that. But since, since it was at the meeting, I can make sure it's in the manager's report, just so you can see what they were, uh, at least proposed. Um, and then you'll have the presentation piece of that after.
And is that presentation piece going to include the front porch? Is that going to be a line item? How, how does that?
Correct.
So they'll have the?
Councilmember Trent?
They'll have the budget by then of the cost of the town square?
That's what they're hoping for, right?
Initial numbers, yeah. The hard numbers are in July, but initial April.
Ten, tenth, tenth or the twenty-fourth, April tenth?
The fir-, yeah, that's, it's the first one, yeah, the first.
So we're going to have to approve something without, if the numbers aren't until July?
The budget approval is May, so you'll have the, at least the initial request, um, and then, uh, the details will then be up to council after that.
Yeah, so I think what, this helps, there'll be a number of their balance, their fund balance, without an ask on it. So I, I, they can't say, we want X amount for the project, because they won't know until July. So I think you'll see a large fund balance, somebody said a couple million dollars, um, and then they'd come back at a separate action to this board to talk about that project, to come out of their fund balance. So it's an undesignedated fund balance at this point.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, next is a report from the Historical Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Founder's Day was a rousing success. We actually sold out for the first time ever. Uh, there were, uh, over a hundred and twenty-five plus, uh, actually attended, uh, the celebration. We also just delivered twelve hundred of the coloring books, and I think this is like our twenty-fifth year we've been doing this with the, uh, with Rochester Community Schools for the second graders, to, uh, promote the, the history of the greater Rochester area, uh, via a coloring book that we disseminate to, uh, the schools. The In-Town Magazine, the spring/summer, uh, when does that get published?
Yep, so we're shooting for this, uh, April, the la- the second Friday in April for the deadline. Aaron and Megan, um, are working on it, so we're trying to get it out to the public by the end of April.
Great. Could we put something in there?
The newsletter, you mean, oh, no, In-Town, I'm sorry. In-Town is, they're.
That's DDA.
Yeah, they're doing that now. They just took all the photos, so it's, I think it's coming out pretty soon.
Could we get Greater Rochester Heritage Days, uh?
You'd have to get ahold of them quick. It might be too late, but I know they were working on all the photos and stuff last week, so.
Can we put it at least in the, in the newsletter?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
All right. That'd be great. And there was a request, uh, so we went through and looked at the, uh, uh, some of the people listed on the Historical Commission, and one's deceased, so we need to take her off. But there are three others that we need to remove, so I'll just send you a note.
Yeah.
Um, to that. And has there ever been any consideration to making the reappointment, uh, process a little easier? Instead of, eh, maybe it's a shorter form, or, I mean, you have to submit the entire application again, right? And I know, I'm, I'm just, just asking, is there a way to say, hey, I've been on here for twenty years, I'd like to redo, renew?
Yes and no, um, if I could, Your Honor. Um, part of that application is the, um, ethics, um, answer, question answer, so that changes over. So that was one of the mech- that is the only mechanism to have council get the information that's required in the ethics ordinance to answer those questions, so.
That, that I understand. Thank you. All right. That's it?
Very good. Next is a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we did hold a public hearing, um, uh, to consider the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant. Um, we had to do so and then pass a resolution, and now we're having a special meeting this Wednesday to recognize those minutes, so that we can submit the application. Uh, and that's what we talked about tonight for the commitment on the city of Rochester, uh, for the hundred and ninety-one thousand matching funds. So that, uh, that is good. Um, Eagle gave us some good news as well. The piece of property, the southeast Rochester piece of property, they said that we can go and potentially develop that property. And they gave us some stipulations that we'll be able to work in the floodway and the floodplain, but we have to follow some guidelines that they're going to give to us. Um, so we approved, um, fifteen hundred dollars for AEW to give us a, an estimate on the scope of work and, and what we could do there. So hopefully that piece of property will get, uh, developed. Um, we mentioned earlier that, uh, Melissa is leaving us, um, to go to work, uh, in, uh, I can't remember which museum.
I'm not sure what to say.
Oh, it, yeah, Sagin?
Saginaw or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would it be appropriate to put the trail manager job description on our website?
I thought it was. I thought it was. I saw it online somewhere this past week, but.
Great.
We could do that.
Okay. No, it's great, uh, because they're looking for applications by April third.
Okay.
They're really trying to fill it quick.
I guess so.
That's it? Very good. Not on the agenda, we're going to have a report from the OPC liaison, Mayor Proton Salvia?
Yes, this was, uh, on last, last meeting's agenda, and I was not here. So OPC Board met March second. Um, the Oakland County Board of Commissioners approved the transportation agreement on February sixteenth. Uh, OPC invoiced them for the full budgeted amount, so they have now received one million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars from the county for transportation services through the OPC. So we'll be talking a lot about transportation. Um, March first is the Spring Into Action Month. Um, since January first, over thirty-three thousand people have walked through the facility, and that includes five hundred new memberships. And attendance is back to pre-COVID level, so for a, a senior center, that's, um, everyone's feeling really good. Uh, the Summer Solstice Soiree, mark your calendars for June twenty-third. That is the fundraiser for Meals on Wheels. Uh, they are looking for sponsors, of course, as well. Um, also, from a facility standpoint, uh, they have received a grant from Oakland County. Some of Oakland County's ARPA funds were granted to the OPC for facilities improvements, for roof, uh, for roof, roof and parking lot and other capital improvements. Some of those you're going to see starting right now. So if you see scaffolding and things like that, that's where those funds came from. And then also they received $22,000 from Home Depot to update the community gardens there. So a couple of nice grants coming to the OPC. That is all.
Very good. Thank you. And I just, also, we did have a second, just real quickly, we did have a second Planning Commission meeting this month. And we started the process that we had that joint meeting about the master plan and starting to look at different zoning areas. We looked at, we're going to try, we looked at three. We're going to then have a public hearing. Then it's going to come to council. Council will have a public hearing and we'll kind of get that process going. And each of the second meetings of the month, we're going to try to address three different ones and keep that process moving. That's ongoing. Next, public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Dr. Tala, long time no see. Welcome, welcome back.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I wanted to come actually, starting even this beginning of the year, to come and share with you some of the things that I'm concerned about and worried about. But tonight, just before I seize the efforts and the work of the day, I got a text from one of my tenants, she's a physician, and she's really complaining of what's going on. In the weekend, there were a bunch of kids roaming in our elevators. Marijuana was there, smell of the elevators, alcohol was there. You know, these elevators are at the lower level, so they can't go up to any office, but they are down at the level of the garage. So they made it a shelter for them and they started doing what they wanted to do. So she's complaining. And you know what? This has been happening more than we like. They used to do it sometimes when they find the door to our roof unlocked. They'll go even to the roof of 543 and do, do what they want to do. So we blocked all that, we keep an eye on that. But the elevator, we can't close them at the lower level. But that's not the issue of the elevators. We have cameras. We've had so many incidents over the year of vandalism and damage in our garage. The graffitis are all over. Vulgar, sexual, insulting. It's the same as under the bridge. If you go under the bridge, you'll see what I'm talking about. So, you know, this is Rochester. We shouldn't see this kind of stuff. I really think the only time I see security from the police going is when they go at high speed across my lot to bypass university to come to their headquarters. I've asked in the past Chief Shetlandham that he needs to recommend to his cops to keep an eye at night. The only time I get a call from the city police is when there is something happening on the lot, but not about damage being done there. There is vandalism that's inappropriate, excessive in this town. And we need more security. That doctor and her staff are scared to go through the garage to get upstairs. That shouldn't be the case. That should not be the case. We shouldn't be having all these graffitis. I actually, for the last few weeks, have been taking pictures. And I was going to bring them all to you and so on and discuss about the water, the hardness, about the electricity, the equipment we lose constantly, the amount of cost to do business in Rochester. I don't know if you're aware of all that. I said it in the past, but now I can't keep living with that. Nick, thank you for working with me and the City Department so we can resolve the issues on 134. So we didn't, I did not have to go to court because I don't want to go to court. I did everything I can to resolve the issues peacefully and get a good results. So we have certificate of occupancy. We're trying to bring people to town. We're trying to get tenants and we're getting good tenants, really good people, people we can be proud of that can enjoy what we have in here. But I think the city has to do its job. And I'll be bringing you pictures and showing you what I'm talking about. But right now, this incident this weekend, as I was looking at the website and seeing you meeting, I said, maybe, maybe I'll have a chance to talk. Please help us. We need that help. We need to keep Rochester at the level of Rochester. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Doctor.
Do you mind?
Mr. City Manager.
So Doc, you know I love you, all right. But it's not our job to go on private property to do anything other than respond to a crime. I will tell you, you know this to fact, we're praying that we don't have to write, take code enforcement out for your underground garage. That is the number one complaint in this entire city since I've been here for 15 years. You have to do your part of this partnership. This is a partnership. There are no lights down there. It's dirty. It's filthy. The silver spoon we thought would make you clean it up, now we're hoping Ernie's is going to do that. You have to do your part. If you had lights down there, brighten it up, paint it white, why would people go down there? You can hide down there. People are scared to go down there. I am probably the only person I know that will go down there. So if you do your part, we'll do our part. But we can't put our police officers go into private garages. So I think you know that, but I can't let you think that we're not doing our job in that. When we see graffiti anywhere, we take care of it immediately. But you have to do your part in that underground garage. You have the best parking in all of Rochester that's free. You have 300 spaces, but people are scared to go down there. And, and there are pipes hanging and it's filthy. So that's, you do that and we'll do our job. And I, I have to protect us and our reputation because it's not founded that people, kids do bad things. They jump off our decks. They go and smoke pot in our elevators, but when we catch them, we use cameras, we catch them and then we prosecute them. So we'll do our part to help you, but you have to do your part too. And I hope you don't take offense to that, but that's just the way it's got to be.
Nick, I have to disagree with you completely. The lights are always there 24/7. It is clean and we clean it regularly. It is, no, you are not, I don't know what you're saying. No, 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 I can take you right now down there.
Dr. Tala, when was the last time you had the structural integrity reviewed of that structure?
Say that again.
When is the last time you had the structural integrity verified of that parking structure?
Actually, we had it several times.
By independent contractor?
Several times.
What year?
With structural engineers.
What year?
A year ago, two years ago, constantly. Right now, I'm preparing the plans to do what I need to do for that deck.
I mean, there was a hole in it, a hole.
Yeah.
And so the.
The structural engineers assured me, and I can give you their names. I don't have them right now. I can check my phone and give you the names, that it's solid and that I can go build over that deck. Okay? And I'll give you their names and I'll have them come here if you want them.
And, and there's, there's water, there's water, there's water in that structure.
That's, that's puddles in the cement. That's not the steel. That's not the structure.
No, there's water, puddling. When you, when you go in there, if you were going to try to park your car in there, there's puddling of water. I have pictures.
Yeah, Doc, you, you need to take a look at it. Trust me, we, we get so many complaints and we're, I know you have a plan to fix it and that's great. But number one, paint it, clean it up, get all the electrical done properly. And then I think you have a lot less problems down there. Because right now, people aren't afraid to go down there only to do bad things. So barely anybody uses that for parking and that's too bad because that's great parking.
Nick, we're talking about two different issues. She brought the structure.
Well, there's holes in the tops. Yeah, there's holes in the top. It might be structures sound.
I would be happy to do a tour with you there and show you the lights and show you the cleanliness and I'll show you the rest. Okay?
Sure. Why don't we have?
Yeah, I'll do that.
See what you guys work together and see if you can come up with something.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do it.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Pat?
Okay, Pat Kane, 817, West Fourth Street. We're really muddling everything when all these other cities so simply took everything out of it and just said, your light stays on your property and residential. That was it. How you do it, it's your problem. But they gave two years or five years. And you know what? Cities that did it got into compliance without a problem. Something I've never heard yet from planning or from city administration. Who is an advocate for those of us who have the chief come out and say, these lights are all in compliance? Because everybody that has sent a letter, blocked their windows, spent money, gone to planning, couple of letters, ready for this? Every light's in compliance. Those two lights that are directly through my entire house from across the street, you mean somebody can't illuminate their backyard unless they illuminate my bedroom closet, living room, dining room, and one light stops on the side of my refrigerator? It's ludicrous. And it's insane to think that that is proper. What about light trespass? Ownership. I haven't heard one word advocating that we need to take care of it. This city is not cheap to live in. And our fees we're going to see go up. It's expensive. All housing is expensive. And my rights go to a neighbor? Really? That's not right at all. I have yet to hear from anybody about curbing the tremendous amount of light pollution, light trespass, over lighting and stray lighting that does nothing while all these other cities and countries are getting on board. Cities up north, cities to the south of us, all over the United States, I think in the last few years, 100 ordinances. Not good enough for Rochester. I wonder what makes us so special. And I will say something. Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem did say we're a city of lights. Here's the difference. That's commercial, that's business, that's bucks downtown. Residential is residential. And you don't give out residential property lights. Some people have to live less than. Some people don't have their rights, utilities go up. But here's the thing, what I heard again tonight. Oh, the cost if one person has to change their light fixture. Excuse me. What about the thousands somebody else has to spend? People left this city because of the very situation we're in. They were forced out. The person with the letter, $500 for one shade, still didn't block the lights. They're not happy. Another person with new construction, put styrofoam on a window because the new construction that was done, you ready for this? I was under the understanding, new construction has a light plan in residential. Who in the wide world would say, you can put up a big light fixture with clear glass, about seven feet or 10 feet from that guy's window and change his whole life? Well, that's what's happening. But these lights are direct into windows. And I do believe what we've said there is that they're not supposed to be into bedroom windows. Talk about an invasion of privacy and feeling violated in your own house. My taxes went up on a porch I can't use. And I will not tolerate, excuse me for, I shouldn't, let's not say it. I don't want to hear again that quote, those lights are just bright and bother her, but they're not in her house. They're in my house. They're on my ceiling in my living room. They are throughout my house. But I have not heard one word about advocating that that isn't right. All I'm hearing is cost to other people. You put a sunset in of three or five years, if there is an initiated concern by the resident that wants the lights out of their house now because it's too much, you get it out, you throw out the metrics. Metrics don't work. And those people at Great Oaks, it wasn't just high lights. Some of them were porch lights. So there we go. But you sure make sure the commercial lights and they're all the lights can't affect residential. But residential can? Why would you advocate to take somebody's rights away in their house with glare? Look at those photographs. Because I'm going to come back again, and you know what's going to happen? I feel like I'm just being kicked down the road for how many years? And it all started with the light study about 15 or better years ago, when I caught manipulation of the light study numbers that were sent in. And thank God, there were people that were witness to it. And then you know what happened? Planning went like this. Ah, to heck with it. Well, lights have changed, housing have changed, the amount of lights on property on some of them are ridiculous. Okay? Nobody should have their rights taken away. My name's on the tax rules. I've spent thousands. You know what? Those thousands could have gone for my husband. They could have gone for easing a burden for him, instead of trying to give us a house that we can live in and still not use our porch. So I'm pretty angry about it. And now we're going to take this and move it down the road, take it back. Tell me what year I can expect resolution, because I'll tell you how I feel. Maybe she'll shut up or maybe she'll move. Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be forced out like two other people were. And I'm not going to take it like other people have when they come to city administration and planning and say, oh, it's in compliance, there's nothing we, it's in compliance. They can read books and newspapers in their bedrooms. Oh my God. I have to get rid of drapes because my line drapes, his lights go right through it. You can see the bulb, the, take a look at those photographs, because photographs don't lie. And I'll tell you, I'm upset about it. So I need to, want to see it tweaked. And as far as the carriage or the, the measurements go, they don't work at all. And if you say 100 watt, that doesn't work because supposedly these are 60 and 40. Hard to believe, okay? Then the next thing is, I hear about the string lights and that. Most cities define the little string lights and there's a measurement for Christmas lights. And Christmas lights are not permanent attachments to a garage or a house. And they define the months. Now, we do have people that use Christmas lights on in our neighborhood, November, December, January, February, and take them out in March, on every night. Okay? As far as these, what you call a regular cafe or string light, when they're the big Edison ones like this, they throw right through houses. And what people would like to see is, maybe they're not on till late. So if somebody wants to enjoy their yard, they don't have it in their face with the glare or throughout their whole house. But that's, you're just throwing that out. But that's something that does need to be probably dealt with because we're not commercial. We're residential. If you want to start doing all this commercial stuff and make your house look like it's a used car lot, or it's some cafe downtown, then we got to rethink it. Right now, carriage lantern lights, garage lights, that is the huge issue. And nobody should have to live with them 24/7, especially across the street because it is ludicrous to light and illuminate my entire inside of my house, to light a backyard across the street. That's called light pollution. And that is called light trespass. And it is a physical trespass. It's energy. That needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment, Brian? Doesn't look like anything going on.
There is none. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for staying up with us, Brian. You appreciate that. Next on.
Absolutely.
Next on to General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Just got a couple of quick things here. May 25th, Chief Shetlandham's party. Tickets are going robustly. The funds building up already for the, the scholarship funds. We're excited about that. Speaking of the police chief, we completed the application process. I have narrowed down the selection to four candidates. All candidates were great. I think we should be proud that we attracted such good quality folks here. And our own internal candidate has made the cut at number four within the top four. They now go to an assessment academy that we've, the council approved paying for that. So Chief and I today filled out our form about the fit and what kind of things we're looking for in that job description on a day-to-day basis. So their representative candidate spent a good hour with us, I think, and very professional, very thorough. And these folks will be vetted. It's not to see if you have the qualifications to be a police officer. This is a police chief. So then they will give me a report, then I will make a selection, then that has to be approved by this body.
approved by this body. So expect by early May that we should have a candidate. And before, well before the chief has his last day here at the city on staff. So that's number one. Now, number two, the tree committee is working hard to have a Great Arbor Day. Mayor Barnett just sent out something I saw that they, they really embrace it. They're 36 years of a tree city. They should be proud of that. That's, that's huge. And I gave him kudos for that. But our, we started now in our ninth year, I think, and we've really ramped it up. Tree Committee's taken it very seriously. Melissa Weiss, Bill Thomas, along with our council folks. And we are planning a program at MacArthur, McGregor, I'm sorry, McGregor School, and what will plant the tree. We're engaging the third graders to do a project. They're actually going to come up with a mascot that we can use for our tree committee, which will be kind of cute. And working with them, I found 75 little white pines, which is a state tree, that we're going to give to the kids. There are plugs that they get that day and then they take care of them in their home for a year in, in water, literally. And then they pot them for a year and then they plant them. So they have to show a relationship with that tree, if you will, which I think will be very exciting to get there. Megan had her baby a couple of weeks ago, little baby boy, doing great. We just talked to her today when she said, hey, I'm kind of bored. Anything you want me to do at home? Meg, we're good, we're good, we got this. So speaking of that, if you see Holly Myers, give her a big hug. This is a woman that's doing, your manager's reports are out earlier than ever, your council packets are out earlier than ever. Leanne and Brian and Chief Shetlandham doing his own stuff, putting it into the format. I don't know how Holly's doing all this work, working Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. She's just doing an unbelievable job and she seems to be having fun. I'm like, just cry uncle when you need to because we've got help. But everybody's pitched in and, and made sure our planning commission packets are done, Rose. And again, Leanne's been great, kind of looking over the whole process to make sure we don't miss a beat. So kudos to Holly and just want to publicly thank her for everything that she's doing for me. That's it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
A reminder that petition packets to run for city council are available at the clerk's office. The deadline is four weeks from tomorrow, April 25th at 4:00 PM. And also, oh, as, as I get submittals, I will send out updates to city council via email as they come in so that you're apprised of who has submitted and who's going to be on the ballot. And look for later this week, I'll be providing council an update on the Memorial Day plans over at Mount Avon. Been working with a couple of individuals at Rochester Hills. We're hoping to advertise together so that our events get the same exposure.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have something?
Mayor, yes, I did have just a couple announcements. One is from the county. March 31st is the deadline for the taxpayer assistance programs for outstanding property taxes, 2020 and prior. We currently have 11 properties that meet that. This has been door knocked, door hung. Mail described everything we can do to get, make sure they know the message. What's unique this year specifically is there's a lot of additional sources of funding to mitigate taxes and to keep people out of foreclosures. So just a message on that. Other one is from the, is for the community garden. So we did post on social media today, but there are only 20, this is the post, there are only 27 plots remaining that are open. So they keep a list and then when the year starts, they start going through, are you still interested? So there's 27 left for the year. And then lastly, thank you to City Beautiful Pollinators and Dinosaur Hill for the display case changes in the lobby. So please, if you haven't seen that, check that out. And a thank you to those groups. And that is all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, I would like to request an excused absence for the first meeting in March.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
That is all.
Councilmember Sage. Couple things, Madam Clerk. Have we had anybody submit any petitions so far for council?
Not yet, so far. I expect that to change tomorrow and as it does, I'll let you know.
Very good. And also, if we could amend the city calendar. Chief Steve's retirement party, the historical commission will meet on the day, on Wednesday, the 24th.
Okay.
Instead of the 25th.
Can't miss that. No, it's a place to be. Throwing it out there.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, speaking of the display, I'd like to personally thank Rachel Williams, Janine Krop, Julia Johnson, our new CBC member, Amanda Felk of Dinosaur Hill and the Rochester Pollinators for the work that they did on the display. And I'd like to add that 15 minutes a day in nature causes you to be less, more relaxed and less stressed. So please see the five gardens and the trail that is available for relaxing and being less stressful. And enjoy celebrating our nature and green spaces and pollinators when you take a look at that display.
That's all it takes to reduce stress?
That's right. And I may be at the end of this meeting, you guys, I know it's a little dark, but just take a walk on the wild side on Dinosaur Hill. We have a colorized map now. Thank you. You're welcome. Me, my team. That is a, it's a Dinosaur Hill Nature Trail Preserve map is now colorized. It was all black and white and it had to be fixed, so my, we took care of that.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, a couple of things. One, if administration could ask the Oakland County Commissioner that represents our community to come in and speak, I'd like to know about some of the budget cuts that have taken place out of the police, the county police department and understand why that took place. So because there is 1.9 million given to some schools for public safety and I think that cutting police dollars is not a good idea. So I'd like to know how they came about with that. Thank you.
The only thing I have is that, just a reminder, the state of the city is May 10th and the city manager and I are working on it and looking forward to a big evening. So without further ado, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.